Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. Mayor David Narcoitz, the Chair of the School Committee. This meeting is being held in an online Zoom format pursuant to the emergency COVID orders that were first enacted back in two thousand and twenty and have been extended through the spring of two thousand and twenty one. We would ask folks who are participating in the meeting to keep yourself muted and and we will have an opportunity for public comment, at which point I will ask folks to recognize folks and ask them to unmute to to address the school committee. Let's begin by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee, please.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Present.
Member Busansky.
Present.
Member Fallon. Yeah, yeah, uh, member Seraphy Cox. Not here yet. Uh, member Condon will not be joining us this evening. Uh, member Levy.
Present.
Member Kaufman.
Present.
Member Goldman.
Present.
Member Voss.
Present.
And member Gold.
Present.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll keep an eye out for other members who may be arriving momentarily, but we do have a quorum, so the meeting will proceed. The first item on our agenda is our public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to offer public comments to the school committee. We ask folks to identify yourself, your where, your name and where you live. And and then obviously, we ask folks to please limit their remarks to three minutes just to ensure that everyone who wishes to speak has an equal opportunity to do so. So if you do wish to speak in public comment tonight, I would ask you to raise your Zoom hand, which is now found in the reactions, most commonly found in the reactions tab down at the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in by phone, you may have to use your star functions to raise hands, but I will go in the order in which they are called. And the first hand that's raised this evening is Michael Klein. Michael, if you could please unmute and just again identify yourself and where you live and you'll have three minutes.
Great. Um, thank you very much, Mayor Narcoitz and the committee for letting me speak to you all. Just really briefly, if my name isn't familiar, I live in East Hampton. My son attends the high school. Back in March, we had an issue about deciding about if he would return to school remotely or in person, and there was some debate between myself and my former spouse about it. I spoke with the school about it and we had a plan to try to work it out before the return to school. I contacted the school in the interim to find out that a decision had been made that he would be given remote status, even though we hadn't determined that between myself and my former spouse, and it was left to my son to ultimately make the decision. You know, look, I was, I was very upset and very angry and wrote what I would consider a rather aggressive email about not being informed about the decision. And it was an email intended for your principal of the high school and only for her. After sending it, I picked up the phone, realizing that really speaking to her would be a much better route to go, given the aggressive nature of my email. We came up with a plan and then as I was memorializing the plan, an email came into my inbox. She had forwarded the email that I sent to her about my son that contained some rather sensitive information about him and my concerns to my son and to my former spouse. I expressed my concerns about this to her, to your superintendent twice. I still haven't received a response to that action. And I just, I wanted to speak to you tonight just because I believe I understand from your attorney that this is not an issue that the board would typically bring up ironically because of staff privacy concerns. Desi did apologize to me and said that there should be, or there is rather, assumed privacy between a parent and principal and that they were sorry that this happened. You know, essentially, the reason that I wanted to talk to you was just so you could see my face, put a face to my name, if my name is familiar to you, if you did see my emails, and really implore you to to try to take up this issue. I think this was an incredible lapse of judgment that was never acknowledged by your principal or your superintendent. And the fact that the committee won't put it on their agenda to me is a little disconcerting. I own, again, my anger, the aggressive nature of my email. But I do think that it's, it's an item for the committee to consider going forward and how you manage these kinds of things. So with that, I'll turn things back over to you, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next person who has raised their hand to speak is Heather Brown. Heather, you can go ahead and unmute, please, and again, just introduce yourself and where you're from.
Hi, thank you. I'm Heather Brown. I live in Florence. And as some of you may know, I'm the Vice President of the North Hampton Association of School Employees. And I am going to speak in that role tonight. Other, aside from being a parent and also an employee of the district, I just wanted to support and applaud the school committee for bringing back the updated policy on bias and hate symbols tonight and putting it early in on the agenda. And we at NACE really encourage this policy to be voted on as quickly as possible and instituted and incorporated into our code of conduct to make our schools a safe and just place for for all folks to learn and also for us to work. So thank you for doing that, and I look forward to hearing more about the policy later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. The next person whose hand is raised is Kaia Imperial Jewett. Kaia? Go ahead and unmute.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kai Imperial Jewett and I live in Leeds. I'm an eighth grader at JFK Middle School and I'm here to tell all of you on the school committee how hate speech in school affects me and many of my peers. When I hear and see hate speech or hate symbols in school, I am immediately shocked. Shocked that it could be here at my school, the school where I and six hundred of my peers go to learn every day. When the initial shock wears off, fear then floods into its place. Fear that if hate speech is here, then the violence it encourages could come here too. Violence that disproportionately targets certain groups because of how they identify. Violence that could target my classmates. Violence that could target me as an Asian American and a member of the LGBTQ plus community. This fear sets me on edge. I get nervous. I watch my back. I'm distracted from my learning and life for the rest of the day or even the rest of the week. All this to say, hate speech has no place anywhere, least of all a place of learning like our school. A place where everyone, regardless of race, gender, sexuality, ethnicity, religion, mental or physical ability, or any other aspect of their identity should feel welcome. You have the power and the responsibility to make this place a reality. Please take it for the sake of our generation and all of those to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kai. The next person who is, has their hand raised to speak is Soph Johnson. Hopefully, I've pronounced your first name correctly. You can go ahead and unmute and again, introduce yourself and where you're from, and you have three minutes.
All right. Hello, North Hampton School Committee. My name is Soph Johnson and I'm in eighth grade at JFK Middle School and I live in East Hampton. It was brought to my attention that there's a chance that the anti-hate speech policy will not be passed. I think that passing the policy would be a very good thing for our schools because it would make people feel safer. The policy could help stop aggressions against people because of race, gender, or any other sort of bias. Using this policy, hate speech would be discouraged and met with consequences. I love the North Hampton Public Schools community, but there have definitely been times where I felt unsafe because of people bullying or discriminating against me because of my gender. I have seen it occurring among other friends and classmates as well. Whether it's a rude comment on your clothing or seeing the Confederate flag in class, these little things can greatly affect many students' days, including how well they perform at school and their emotional health. I am aware that if this new policy is brought to court, then it might not survive scrutiny because of the First Amendment. However, that does not mean that I won't, that it won't make a difference in our North Hampton community. Hate doesn't belong anywhere, especially in our schools. I think this policy would definitely impact many teachers and students, including myself, for the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next person who has a hand raised to speak is Kiara Badillo. Kiara, if you can go ahead and unmute and introduce yourself and where you're from.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kiara. I'll repeat your pronouns. I currently live in Chester, Mass, but I am an alum of Jackson Street School and JFK. I'm going to keep this brief. As you said, there's a lot that needs to be talked about tonight, and this is more of a long term goal and hope for collaboration with you all. So if you don't know, we lost someone in our community on July fifteenth. His name was Cole Tobias Johnson. He was, you know, he went to JFK, he also went to Jackson Street School, and he was just a real member of our community and just someone who made a real impact on a lot of us. And so my hope is to be here and speak on behalf and then hopefully integrate more voices on having him
Recording in progress.
Having him memorialized in some way at Jackson Street because it was such a huge part of his upbringing and just his community and his foundation. And so my hope is that we will update some of the outdoor basketball courts, have a mural dedicated to him and have those courts renamed the Cole Johnson Courts. But more to come on that. I just wanted to say thank you all for having me and again, a face to the name. And so hopefully, in, you know, in time, we will collaborate and find ways forward to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kiara. The next person who has a hand raised is Amelia Durbin. Amelia, if you can go ahead and unmute and introduce yourself and where you're from.
All right, thank you. My name is Amelia Durbin. I am, I live in Florence, Massachusetts, and I'm an eighth grade student at JFK. I love North Hampton School District. I've grown up with the community and the teachers' environment. I've learned so much and had so much done throughout elementary and middle school. However, there have been times where myself or classmates have felt uncomfortable or shocked even by other students and sometimes even teachers' behavior. While there are many allies and continue to be allies who have supported me and others, there is still work to be done. There have been people who have said or acted negatively upon something like race, gender, sexual identity, or other forms of prejudice. It was simply not okay. There have been symbols and sayings shown in school environments that have made myself and peers extremely uncomfortable. There have been many microaggressions like comments on hair or clothes, and I've been a Confederate flag in Congress. I myself have also have negative comments on my sexual identity and have heard about bullying directed at friends and classmates. What makes it even more frustrating is the fact that it has been and continues to often be cast away. This needs to change. Schools should be a place where everyone, everyone, regardless of who they are, should be and feel safe. Education is important to us all, but kids can't learn in an environment where we feel self-conscious and nervous. The bias and symbols of hate policy could change experiences for students and staff alike. Kids, no matter what background we come from or what we believe, should not, do not deserve to be bullied or looked down upon. We shouldn't have to deal with fellow students who don't support us or adults who don't mind when we're hurt. Please, on behalf of myself and fellow students, pass this policy so you can all have the learning environment we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amelia. The next person whose hand is raised is Berita Wallace. Berita, go ahead and unmute and three minutes.
Yes, I was going to start my comment by addressing the school committee, but and and you, Mayor Narcoitz, but I really want to say to the students who have spoken, I am so darn proud of you right now that it is not even funny. So I appreciate that. If nobody else says it, Ms. Wallace, really appreciate you standing up and being interrupters. Thank you. Okay, now, for everyone else, my name is Maritha Wallace and I live in Amherst and I am an ESP at John F. Kennedy Middle School. I'm also, I also run SOCA after school and I just want to say it would mean a lot for people who look like me, for people whose sexual orientation and where they fit in the alphabet of the LGBTQ plus two community. We need to feel safe in our environment and right now We need to feel safe in our environment and right now we don't. We don't have a policy that's in place for how to deal specifically when we feel, when we have had these microaggressions against us. There's nothing. So I would like to encourage you from, from the bottom of my toes to please pass this policy so students can feel safe at all times, all students. And I hope that as we progress through the year, that we can grow and change and encourage each other to have difficult conversations. And I just want to know, I just want to say, Dina, I really appreciate what you've said and what you did about the rules and the roles during the gender, the gender identity. Because I have held on to that for my first five days of school. Three of those days, I've heard things that have allowed me to break the rule of minority people staying quiet and not standing up. So we're finding our voice and we're not afraid to fight and we want to just stand. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Christine White Ziegler. Christine, if you can go ahead and unmute and you have three minutes, please let us know who you are and where you're from.
Yeah. Hello, I'm Christine White Ziegler. I'm from Florence. I'm also a professor at Smith College and I teach microbiology and immunology. So I'm here to talk about a different topic that's on the agenda and that's the recommendation for a vaccine mandate for all teachers and staff in the schools. And I want to give my large support to that initiative. I also want to thank the Department of Public Health and the school committee for all of the things that they've already done to make our schools safer for students. But I think that this initiative is imperative to protect students. We need to protect those who are under 12, who are ineligible for the vaccine, but we also need to to protect everyone of all ages who are immunocompromised. So I think that's really an important thing and I hope that you move forward with that. I would go a little further. I think there should be a mandate in the future for all students as they are eligible that they also have to receive the vaccine. We do this for many, many other vaccines. And so we should do it here as well. It guarantees the health of our community, the school community, our children, but also our greater community. So I would push for a vaccine for everyone. And then last, I would question a bit, I don't know where the science is coming from about taking the idea of masks being able to be removed once we hit 80% of a vaccination rate. I think we can see from the data that comes out of Israel that you still get infections even when you have a high rate of, when you have a high rate of vaccination. So instead, I think that there should be consideration that when the choice to remove masks happens in the school, that it should be related both to vaccination rate, but also to current case rates. We know that the breakthrough infections, while small, are still significant and people are being exposed whether or not people are vaccinated or not. So it's really important for us to do the utmost we can to keep our kids safe in the schools and all the staff and faculty as well. And so again, I think that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say in support of that measure and further measures to increase that protection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next person who has their hand raised is Allison Spencer Bunch. Allison, if you can go ahead and unmute and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. I am also here to add my voice in support of the school committee efficiently and quickly reviewing and passing this anti-bias policy. Because I think the lack of a policy currently leads to what we're seeing tonight and what we generally see, which is the people who are most directly impacted have to show up every time something happens and advocate for themselves and ask for the basic protections they need, ask for things to be done in response to things that have been done to them. And a policy takes some of that weight off and says, we care about this issue proactively and we're going to do something about it proactively. So it doesn't always have to be the case that something happens and people have to ask themselves for them to be protected. Thank you. Oh, I live in Ward Five and I teach at JFK.
Thank you so much. The next person whose hand is raised is Jessica. Jessica, if you could unmute and let us know your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Morris. I live in Northampton. And I wanted to speak in support of the anti-bias work and also to witness the bravery of the young people who spoke in this forum. And I also wanted to speak in favor of the staff vaccine mandate. I think that is a very important piece of the many pieces of keeping all of our community safe. I am also required to be vaccinated by my employer and it has given great safety to many of us. So I really want to support the school board in having all staff vaccinated. I would echo the previous person who discussed making vaccinations a requirement for everyone 16 and older now that the FDA has approved the Pfizer vaccine and to explore making the vaccine required for everyone who's older than 12 or 12 and older. And lastly, I'd like to speak in support of having the superintendent and the school committee reexamine the current mask guidelines, which would allow for a student to spend the entire day in a mask with a single layer of fabric. And to reevaluate the mask guidelines and mandates in light of the most current science. Because currently, as they read, a student could wear a single layer of fabric as a mask and be in line with the current masking requirements. And I do not think that that is sufficient to prevent outbreaks and spreads. Thank you very much, and I very much appreciate all the school committee members for their time during probably the most unbelievably difficult time to ever be a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Orin Jenkins. Orin, if you want to unmute and identify yourself and where you're from. Orin, we can't hear you. We're currently not able to hear you. You're, well, you were muted. Now it looks like you, now you're unmuted.
It might be your headphones, Orin.
Yeah, I think your headphones may not be. Still can't hear you. Um, so I'm not sure what may be happening, Orin. I don't know if you want, I can go on to the next person if you want to try to work on your microphone. Seems like your microphone is not working or not connecting to Bluetooth, so I can't hear you. Do you want to try one last time? Oh, okay. Well, I will come back to you. So let's move forward and Mindy Haskins Rogers, you're the next person. If you can lower, unmute and.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So I am not here to talk about the anti-bias measure, although I am in favor of it passing today, but I came to talk about COVID measures. Especially protecting our elementary school students who are virtually all unvaccinated. Today I forwarded an article to the school board and the mayor, Narquitz, and to Dr. Provost. Basically outlining the way that pediatric cases have risen exponentially over the last weeks. Kids now represent 26% of all new COVID cases and there are record numbers of children hospitalized. There were details about how many of those kids did not have underlying conditions, but I frankly think that kind of conversation is completely ableist, so I'm not going to go there. We need to protect all of our kids and we need to protect their vulnerable family members. So I'm definitely in favor of mandatory vaccination. I hope when the, as the vaccines are approved for students, for those age groups, that they will be mandated in schools as so many other protective vaccines are mandated. And I also am concerned about a couple of policies. I'm glad that my son told me today they were required to wear masks on the playground. We know that children are not distancing. We know that the Delta variant is at least double the contagiousness of the previous variants and that it can be spread by fleeting contact. Our city has a mask mandate that requires masks outdoors when, when we can't distance and we know that students aren't distancing. So I hope you'll keep that in place. I'm also concerned that currently, although vaccinated people are less likely to get the virus, when they do, they are equally contagious. They have the same amount of virus in their nasal passages during the early days before their immune system kicks in. And they are contagious. They are able to spread the virus currently. As far as I understand, the the policy does not require that vaccinated people quarantine after known contact with a positive COVID case. I don't want anybody around our kids, around my kid, who's been in contact with somebody with a known positive case of COVID until they've quarantined and we know that they aren't carrying it. So that's a concern. I'd like to see that policy tightened. And then the other concern is that currently only a few students will be contacted if a student in a classroom is has a positive test result. That's my understanding. Rather than contacting the entire classroom of children. And what I've seen is that even in the high school, kids don't distance from each other. The idea that they're actually going to sit in their desks all day and actually keep some distance is unrealistic. So I would consider everybody in the classroom a contact, a contact that should be notified. I understood there were some concerns about privacy in notifying people, but if you notify the entire class, I don't know how they would possibly single out a single, a single kid as the positive case. And certainly it would be more obvious if just a few kids are out for a couple, for some period of time quarantining. That would be a much easier situation for identifying who the positive case might have been. So I actually think that.
You're at three minutes, so if you could just please wrap up. Thank you.
I'm just urging the district to implement the highest level of safety protocols because I know our kids need to be in school. I want them to be in school and I want them to be safe. So please, thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to go back to Orin Jenkins. Orin, do you want to, do you want to give it another go here?
Yes, thank you.
Great, we can hear you. Excellent.
So my name is Orin Jenkins. I live in Leeds. I'm an eighth grader at JFK. I would like to start by saying that not a lot of people are actually following the mask mandate. I've seen masks not pulled up over the nose and mouth. I've seen paper masks that clearly have their filters spent. I can actually see them being wet. And some people just aren't wearing the masks at all. And here's how I feel, this is how I feel about hate speech. Hate speech makes me feel unsafe and I really feel bad for those who have had it directed at them. I expect all teachers not to use any derogatory terms or other offensive language. If I hear any, I will be very taken aback and I would lose any and all respect for that particular teacher. I know our former president used hate speech a lot at his rallies and in press briefings and that made me lose most respect for the United States. Once, I think during the winter, my family was driving to my grandparents' house who live in Pelham. My dad saw a sign saying China virus while we were driving through Amherst. I didn't see it, but I was told about it. It confused me because I thought we, there weren't any store owners or hotel owners that would put something like that up on a public sign. Conclusion, I deeply and truly think that the anti-hate speech proposal is voted into effect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Orin. The next person whose hand is raised is Ruby Ferrari. Ruby, if you can go ahead and unmute and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ruby Ferrari. I live in Northampton and I am an eighth grader at JFK. I've seen people who are filled with pure anger, targeting people because of the things that they cannot control. A school is not a place where anyone should ever feel unsafe.
Ruby, we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
Well, there are many allies in this community. There are many people who are simply not, who simply have no empathy. People who somehow think it is cool or funny. It should go without saying that bigotry of any kind ever. Yeah. That might make it better.
It has, it has. Please do.
My name is Ruby Ferrari. I'm an eighth grader. I'm an eighth grade student at JFK and I've seen people who are filled with pure hate, pure anger, targeting people. Alright. Well, that.
I'm not sure you're, you were doing fine. Your, your screen disappeared briefly, so I think you may have an unstable connection. Yeah, I think we were able to hear you better when your video was off. You had a little bit more of a stable connection. We sort of, you started dragging a little bit.
Yeah, my wife is not here. Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can again.
It's my connection, okay. Okay. Hi, my name is Ruby Ferrari. I'm an eighth grade student at JFK and I've seen people who are filled with pure hate, pure anger, targeting people because of things that they cannot control. A school is not a place where anyone should ever feel unsafe. A school is supposed to be a place of learning, a place of peace and friends. Well, there are many allies here. There are many people who are simply not, who simply have no empathy. People who somehow think it is cool or funny. It should go without saying that bigotry of any kind is never, ever okay. I should, I know that there is a chance this policy will not be passed. I don't know how that is a possibility or how there's not already a policy in place. The First Amendment protects an opposition to this ban, but it should be obvious that it is not to continue any longer without one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruby, and thanks for your perseverance with the technology. I know it gives us all a hard time every once in a while. So thank you. Thank you for sticking with it and thanks for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Anthony Peck. Anthony, you want to go ahead and unmute?
Thank you, Mayor Narquitz, and thank you, School Committee, for your service to the community. My name is Anthony Peck. I live in Northampton. I've got a middle schooler and a high schooler, which is kind of hard to believe. And I wanted to talk about the vaccine mandate, which I was pleased to see on the agenda and I think it's a great idea, particularly given the widespread adoption of vaccine mandates. But mostly I wanted to highlight the importance of, of adopting potentially more additional restrictions and and looking for weak points where COVID might penetrate into the school system. So right now I just received an email from my employer, which is, when the university's in the area. So we had 146 positive cases amongst fully vaccinated students in the last seven days. And our positivity rate is now 3.8%. So Delta's here and it's, it's spreading in the valley right now. And so I think, you know, I'm hoping my, my employer will be looking away to tighten up its policies around masking and looking at weak points like, you know, like dining halls and stuff like that. So I'd hope that the school committee will be thinking about where the weak points are in the public school system in terms of where your COVID Delta, where the the public school system in terms of where your COVID Delta, where the Delta variant might be penetrating into the, into the schools going forward. So I'd be looking at, for example, lunch and recess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that appears to be all of the hands that I see raised for public comment. So I believe that will conclude our public comment. I want to thank everyone for your comment tonight, especially our students who are here with us tonight. We really appreciate your making time and, and sharing your concerns, which I know the school committee shares. So thank you for being here as well. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is announcements, which is section three. And are there any announcements from members of the school committee? If you could raise hands? Any announcements? Member Gold, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thanks. So I just wanted to also share in a public meeting that after much consideration, I've decided to withdraw from the upcoming election for an at-large school committee seat. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve on school committee for the past two years with the new school year beginning for my family and for my work as a public school teacher in Springfield. And considering the energy and time school committee has required, it has become clear that I need to find other, more efficient and constructive ways to contribute to our great city. I promise to diligently fulfill my responsibilities for the remaining months of this term. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing to be an active member of our community.
Thank you, Member Gold. Is there any other announcements from the school committee? Okay, thank you. Timer that was set for a while ago, sorry about that. So this is, the next item on the agenda is item four, which is recommended actions. This is what we call our consent agenda, which is a bundle of items that we vote on as a group. They are not subject to debate unless, unless an item is removed from the consent agenda. So this evening, we have no approval of minutes. We do have two budget transfers. One is a $33,136 from Bridge Street School to Lead School. The second is a transfer for, to centralize student registration. We are also accepting a donation from Dina Levy and John Martin for the donation of the gender inclusion workshop valued at $1,500. And so those are the items on the consent agenda this evening. Member Gold.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second on that, but I just also want to say that I would very, 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 very much like to approve all of the minutes from the current term while the current school committee members are in office so that we're not in a position that the current members were in previously, where we were approving minutes for our meetings that we did not attend.
Okay, thank you. Is that, and so that's a second.
That is a second, yes.
With a, with a small editorial on there.
With a, with a please bring minutes in the future.
Understood. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded and I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the consent agenda.
Member Bucansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon. Oh, he's not with us tonight. Member Levy.
abstain.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
And Member Gold.
Yes.
And Mayor Narkowitz.
Yes.
Uh, the motion is nine in favor. The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. And so we will now move on to item five on our agenda. That is the reports and recommendations. And the first item on under reports and recommendations, item A, is a report from our Rules and Policy Committee. And that includes a first reading as, as well as a second reading and vote on another item. So the first reading relates to the draft bias and symbols of hate policy. And I will turn it over to Member Fallon, who's the chair of that committee. And I think, Member Fallon, are you here?
Yes, I am, sorry.
And then I don't know if you, well, I'm happy to read into the record that item, but you go right ahead and introduce the item.
Uh, gosh, so I do want to thank everyone who spoke in favor of this and I, maybe the mayor will speak more after I, after I do about the letter we received. But I will say that the Rules and Policy Subcommittee worked for months on this protections from discriminatory bias and symbols of hate policy, and we'd hope to have a first reading this evening. As you've heard, the ACLU has asserted that in its current form, it would not withstand a legal challenge. While I'm uncomfortable being another person in a position of power saying yes, but wait. I, and I acknowledge that there may be negative impacts while we continue to work on this policy. I, I truly believe that it would be wrong to move a policy forward that's not defensible in the imperfect legal environment in which we're operating. In order to affect sustainable systemic structural change, our district needs to adopt a framework that's both enforceable and legally defensible. For that reason, I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee for us to have the opportunity to discuss the letter we received from the ACLU and regroup and to bring forward a policy that can withstand legal challenge while also supporting our students and staff and ensuring that those students that have been historically marginalized are given equitable access to education by creating an environment free from bias and harm. So I would like to make a motion to refer this policy back to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, is there a second for discussion? I see two hands, but is there someone who wishes to second that?
Second.
Okay, Member Levy. Okay, so Member Levy has seconded that motion. And I have, I am prepared for informational purposes if the committee wishes to actually read the letter that we just received yesterday so that the public would have an understanding of what we've received. But if that is requested otherwise, I'll turn it over to Member Seraphy Cox, who has her hand raised.
Thank you. Um, I, thank you for what you said, Member Fallon. Much of that is what I would have said. I, I think it's absolutely imperative that we pass something like this and I don't want anyone to think that I think otherwise. The, the, I think that what we need to do is, is make sure that we have a policy that is not going to be struck down in court. And that is, is just as important as creating the policy in the first place. Because if we create something that is just going to get struck down, then it's like a straw man. You just push it over and it's gone. So I, I want to create something that's strong and that can actually support and, and protect our students and, and staff.
Thank you. Member Levy.
Thanks. I also, I won't repeat what's been said. I, I share the sentiments that have been expressed and just want to share that I am, I am heartbroken to be referring this policy back to the, the Rules and Policy Subcommittee, especially after the amount of time and work that we've put into it and, and our attempts to address the legal issues that were raised in the letter that we received. And I, I, I wholeheartedly agree that as, as heartbreaking as it is to spend more time and to wait longer to have a policy in place, I agree that we've got to have a policy in place that will withstand legal challenge. And so my hope is that we can work in collaboration with the, the person who emailed us from the ACLU so that we are assured that the, the policy that we bring back, which I hope will do incredibly swiftly, will, will withstand the legal challenge. And I want to sincerely thank everybody who has spoken in favor of it, both tonight and in the months that have led to this. We, we hear you. We are, are really, really committed to ensuring a safe and equitable environment, especially for those who hold historically and currently marginalized identities. And one of the best ways we can do that is to have a policy that, that will withstand legal challenges.
Member Voss, you have your hand up next.
Thank you, and I'll echo everything that's been said, especially all of you who very bravely spoke out tonight about your own experiences and all of the others who have spoken out over the past few months. Thank you. I just want to add to this that, yes, it's very important. We do our due diligence to, to write the best policy possible. And we got an email yesterday suggesting that changes need to be made. I do have a question. I guess it's more a comment. I want the public to know, we have had our lawyer, as far as I understand, look at this, we've had a lot of input from people who understand these issues. I've talked on the phone to a lot of people who had concerns about, would it stand up? And I think it's, in some ways, we're leading the way here and we should be. And so what I don't want to do is see us think we're going to get the perfect one that can't possibly be challenged by somebody because it might be, and that's okay. So I just want to encourage us to do our best to make the strongest policy, but then we need to defend it and, and put it forward and, and live with it.
Thank you, Member Voss. Member Gold.
Yeah, I too echo appreciation and hope for getting something passed in the near future. I do want to ask, Member Fallon, if it's, if it's possible to make sure that when we come back, I guess would be the first reading, it's going back to Rules and Policy. If school committee can receive a response from the city's attorneys and school committee's attorneys to the ACLU's letter that we received. And if there is any back and forth, just for us to be able to know that the, the legal teams all had their rebuttals and their responses to it, rather than us debating the legality of it, just to make sure that we know that that's happened.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or discussion from school committee? And I guess the question would be, would, would the school committee feel appropriate for me to read the letter? Since we're making a pretty important decision based upon it and people are finding out about it for the first time, we can certainly post it as well for people to read at a future, and to be able to read, we could post it on the website for people to read. I'm just trying to get some feedback on it. Member Gold.
Considering the length of the letter and like the, the in-depthness that you would have, one would have to read it, took me a couple of times to really read it and digest it. I think making sure that it's posted, making sure maybe the Gazette posts it as well or whatever means we can do it a bit, get it as publicly posted for folks, it would be the better way to go.
Okay, thank you. Member Kaufman.
Yep, I agree with Mr. Gold, uh, Member Gold, sorry. There are so many citations to law and stuff that it, it really, it really is deserving of having, giving somebody the opportunity to kind of look up those laws and legislation and what supported it. So I think it'd be better just to post it.
Okay, so we will do that and we will, it is a rather lengthy letter with significant citations to constitutional cases, both by the Supreme Court and by the Supreme Judicial Court and other legal precedent. And, and so it's, it is, it's a, it's a lengthy legal letter. So it probably would be better if folks are able to just read it. So we just received it and we can work with the district to get that letter posted on the, on the school website, on the district website, so that people have access to it. Okay, so, and you know, Attorney Newman lives in Northampton. So we, I was, I think the committee also has, would have the benefit of even inviting him to the, to your next meeting. I, I know that the city has worked with the ACLU in the past on issues and ordinances and other policies that we have enacted. And the ACLU has oftentimes raised issues about them. But then they have been willing to work collaboratively with us to try to, to try to make sure that, you know, we can write something that will be defensible. So, so that's at least one other option. Okay, so there is a motion made and seconded to refer the committee, the, the policy as proposed back to the Rules and Policy Committee. If there's no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Uh, Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Con, uh, Member Condon is not here. Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narkowitz. Mayor Narkowitz, did we lose you? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, my mute button was off the screen. I apologize. Yes.
Uh, and Member Bucansky.
Yes.
The vote is nine and-
Okay, so that matter is referred back to the Rules and Policy Committee. Then the next item on your list, Member Fallon, is a second reading and vote on the school committee handbook. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So you should all have received the document with adequate time to read through it. I hope that I incorporated, was able to incorporate all of the changes that you recommended during the first reading. And I do want to thank our school committee clerk for helping with all the format and difficulties I was running into and making it look so much better. So I would like to move to accept the school committee handbook as presented, knowing that as soon as possible, the links for policies will be inserted when the migration of, of the policies occurs.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Member Voss.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sorry if I made a mistake here. I, last weekend, read it super carefully and sent an email to Member Goldman. I didn't realize maybe I should have sent it to Member Fallon, so I greatly apologize. And maybe she didn't forward it to you or we just, but I just had some really minor changes, but I think it would help it a lot. Is it okay to just say what they are now? There, there's nothing major, but a few little things I think were a little inaccurate.
Um, sure. Is it something you want to do as amendments or are they Scribner's errors?
No, they're, they're- I'm sorry to interrupt, but if it's small, it's probably better just to email me and Member Fallon and we can do-
No, they're, they're words and, and I have the email here. I could even share the screen and we could just look at them as a friendly amendment and we can use whichever ones you want. I have the email I sent. But I think there's some minor mistakes. For example, I'll give you one example. Northampton is referred to as a town and not a city. Just, it's stuff like that. There's a couple other things that might be slightly more substantial. I can read them one by one. Get an email up. There's one, two, three, four, five, seven little things. Or I can put the list up on the screen and I'll just propose them as friendly amendments or however.
That'd be great. And if you can also email them to me, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Do you want me to read them or share my-
Yeah, it's fine with me. I have the document up if you just want to give us the context.
Um, bottom of page five, I suggest replace town officials with city officials since Northampton is a city.
Right.
Um, on page 11, it puts the parliamentary, parliamentarian on the liaison position. And I think the role is more clear if it was listed, along with the secretary on page 10, since it's not a liaison to, liaison to another group. Um, and it obviously is appointed by the mayor.
I'm sorry, so where did you want to move it to?
Page 11. It's currently on page 11.
Right, under liaison.
One page sooner to go with the secretary because it seems like that's a more similar role.
If we're going to place it there, do we need to define it then also? Because it seems like it would be strange to just have the word parliamentarian right there.
Sure.
Are you all okay with us defining that? Yes. Okay.
Hearing no objections, so, so ordered.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I'm dealing with multiple screens, but on page um, fourteen, it discusses in a paragraph form, the budget process, and um, in my four years on the Budget and Property Subcommittee, I think there's a piece, the, the process that's described there is not what I've been through, um, and I think what needs to be added is that the superintendent always does a public first view budget to the Budget and Property Subcommittee in mid-January. Uh, right now, I don't have the words exactly in front of me, it says the first presentation is to the whole school committee, but it goes through a pretty heavy vetting process, in fact, that's one of the.
So would you, so, so would you add that, where it says the superintendent and the district's business manager prepare the budget calendar and submit it to the school committee during the fall of the prior fiscal year, would you have that be presented to the Budget and Policy Subcommittee during the fall of the prior fiscal year?
No, I would leave it like that, and then I would add a sentence that says um, something like, and John can amend this if he wants to, something like normally in January, the superintendent presents a first view budget to the Budget and Property Subcommittee for their feedback.
You are correctly um, describing the process, I guess what I, my, my preferred language would be that prior to the public um, presentation, the superintendent will review the um, proposed first view budget with the Budget and Property Subcommittee. Sometimes, you know, the timeline on that has shifted, sometimes they've done more than one, so I think that language would capture the different types of um, experiences we could have.
That's fine, one question, Dr. Provost, is um, I, you said before the public, I think the Budget and Properties Subcommittee is public, so do we, instead of saying public, do we want to say before presenting to the entire committee, or something like that?
That sounds great.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm halfway done almost, so page fifteen, um, and I could be wrong here, but right now, the way it's worded with the Superintendent um, Evaluation Committee, it says it meets every year, but I was under the understanding that we changed that to every other year, and again, I need um, input from others who have been here.
I can weigh in on that, now that, we have changed to a two-year process for the Summit of Evaluation, but the Su- the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee does meet um, during the off year to do other parts of the process, so I think the language as written is correct. If, if you want to clarify that, you know, Summit of Evaluation is done every other year, that could be added, but it is correct to say that they meet during the off years as well.
Okay. Um, on page sixteen.
I'm sorry, but the, yeah, member Voss, were you, were you all fine with leaving it as is, or did you feel that it was necessary to add the the additional language?
I wanted it clarified for me as much as everybody, and I'm willing to, if everybody thinks it's fine, then I'm fine with it, I just wasn't totally clear. When I read it, I didn't think it reflected the recent change we made, but if others feel it does, then I'm okay with it.
Sounding, sounding like folks are okay with it, or at least I'm not hearing a lot of, seeing a lot of hands, so.
I'll keep going, thanks. Um, on page sixteen, under negotiations, there's a phrase in there, um, the part I want to keep is, in quotes, "Union negotiations are arguably one of the most important roles of the school committee", but then there's a little phrase in there saying that the other important role is the superintendent selection, and I think that doesn't really fit here, and um, there's other important things besides union and superintendent, so I'm proposing that we get rid of that little phrase about the superintendent selection under a category that's about union negotiations.
So just delete the entire sentence?
Yes.
That's fine. I, I mean, is this, obviously, we're all going to vote on this as a group anyway, so if anyone has objections, please tell us now.
Yeah, these are just friendly amendments, you can take them or leave them. Um, on page nineteen, under scheduled meetings, it reads that we have a meeting on the second Thursday of each month, but we also have meetings on the fourth Thursday of certain months, so I wonder if we would um, just say we have our meetings on the second and fourth Thursdays, um, to keep that open, and so people are aware that those are two dark, are two scheduled meeting times.
You know, we, we struggled with this, to be honest, I mean, our November meeting's not even on the second Thursday, because it happens to be Veterans Day, it's on Tuesday, and our July meeting typically gets changed to a Monday or Tuesday, and so, yeah, we were trying to just in general say when, um.
How about, how about we say, we typically have one to two meetings per month, and they are usually on the second and fourth Thursdays.
Okay.
Okay, my last, my last suggestion, um, it's under meeting agendas on page nineteen, where it says that they're emailed to members, and I thought we talked about this in our retreat way back when, um, adding something like um, materials will be emailed by the Friday preceding the upcoming meeting, or six days before the meeting. You know, either of those, something that's aligned with our practice, because we've gotten.
I'm sorry, which page?
Nineteen, I think. Meeting agendas. It, it says they're emailed to the members.
At the bottom of nineteen.
But, um, a big change we made, which I think was really good, this term, is that the expectation is we will get the materials the weekend before the meeting, whereas um, that didn't used to be the practice, and I think it's good to um, put that practice down, so it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, I mean, we can either add the language, like, once again, this was supposed to be just a general handbook for everyone, and the policy reference that specifically states exactly what you're saying is referenced. Um, but it's up to, yeah, it's, it's up to the committee whether they think that's necessary.
I think it's helpful.
Okay.
I'll throw it out there, I do think that if it seems like everything's in here, folks might not read the policies, and I do like that the policies are there. So maybe, you know, just saying see policies for deeper, so, I don't know.
Okay, um, so, so just to add the language, meeting agendas, along with necessary documents, materials, materials are typically emailed to school committee members the Friday before a Thursday meeting, is that what you're saying?
Just even the Friday before their next meeting would be fine with me.
Thank you. Are there any other changes that anyone would like to recommend before we adopt this?
Any other um, amendments, or? Okay, um, so, um, you, you're accepting, are you, are, are you making the motion to approve with those script, with those friendly amendments?
Yes.
Okay, um, member Voss, will you second the?
I would be happy to second, thank you.
Okay, excellent, well, obviously, I want to thank our colleague, um, member Fallon for her work on this, and uh, perseverance in getting this handbook together for us, and um, I think it will be a useful tool for um, the, the new school committee members coming uh, after November, as well as in, into the future. So, thank you for your work on this. Member Gold.
Uh, just some, thumbs upping your appreciation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so with that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the adoption of the School Committee Handbook.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoit.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
And member Fallon.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, so the School Committee Handbook is adopted, and uh, those changes will be updated, and, and we'll have that prepared for um, current and uh, future school committee members, so thank you. Are there any other issues from Rules and Policy, member Fallon, before we move on?
No, thank you, that was all.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a report this evening from Budget and Property? Member Busansky.
No report from Budget and Property, we have not met since our last meeting, and we are um, intending to meet again in October, so.
Good.
Hopefully, have an update after that.
Thank you so much. The next item uh, is a report from the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, I note that the um, Chair, I remember Condon is not with us this evening. Does anyone else on the committee know if there's anything to report from the, from the Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay, thank you, member Kaufman. Um, next we'll turn to the uh, Business Administrator Report, uh, followed by the Personnel Report, and turn it over to you, uh, Mr. Bernier, Nick.
Thank you, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll keep it brief, I, I know we have several items on the agenda tonight under new business, so um, just quickly, uh, enclosed in your packet was the um, the latest, uh, it should say FY twenty-two appropriation report, I accidentally mistyped it, it said FY twenty-one. Uh, but it's, it's the basic uh, monthly budget report that I provide every month on um, what's been spent since the um, the previous report that you received, um, that report is. That report is accurate as of um, last Thursday, um, when I, when I submitted it. Um, my next step with this is to be looking at areas where transfers will need to be made in order to cover any um, shortfalls for employees who either are no longer being paid with grant funds, or um, sometimes an employee gets a, a raise due to getting a new degree, or a new contractor, or something like that, those things are, um, that they're not always easy to predict when the original budget is created, so, um, sometimes transfers have to be made to um, to accommodate for that, once those things actually happen, so. Um, now that the, the bulk of our hires have been done, although there are still several vacancies um, across the district, um, I'll have a much better idea of what's going to need to be transferred where, and um, I will work on doing that. Um, another project that we're working on currently is gaining input from various stakeholders concerning a spending plan for the S three money that I um, I talked about last month. Um, one of the requirements for securing the funds um, is to get input from various stakeholders, so um, to begin that process, Dr. Provost has reached out to several uh, different people to set up meetings with different groups of stakeholders. Um, I believe there's eight or nine total um, groups um, and meetings scheduled, so um, different groups, including our, our Special Education Parents Advisory Council, our English Learners Parents Advisory Council, NACE, um, just various groups um, that, that certainly have an, an interest here, and that input will be compiled, and will certainly be crucial to us in developing the plan. Um, the other piece of, of what we need in order to submit the grant proposal is essentially a reopening plan, um, which the district already has. Um, obviously, schools are, are open at this time. I will probably, oh, I should say definitely look at the reopening plan and, you know, ensure that it, it's updated to what our current needs are, including safety procedures that are necessary at the time of actually submitting the grant, because that's going to look different than it did when the original reopening plan was submitted last year. Um, so I will work on, on getting that done, and then the proposal is due on October fourth. Um, the input from the stakeholders is going to be huge, um, and just determining how we want to spend these funds, we're, we're getting almost three point four million dollars to be spent by um, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so it's, it's quite a bit of money and quite a bit of time to spend it, so, um, it's very important that different groups of people's voices are, are heard, and, and helping us to develop a, a plan for how we're going to spend this. Um, you'll hear more on that later. Um, I'm also working on submitting the uh, fiscal year twenty-one end-of-year financial report to DESI. Um, it's due every year on October fourth, and it, it's basically reporting on all of the spending we did in the previous year. Um, it's a, it's a very large task, a lot of information has to be compiled, and then um, transposed into a very large spreadsheet that gets submitted, and then um, later on audited. Um, so I'm, I'm working on that as well. Um, you're most likely all aware that the compressor on the freezer at JFK failed on August twenty-fifth. Um, it's already been replaced with a, a used compressor as a temporary fix, that's already up and running, I heard from our Food Service Director today. Um, and, you know, we're, we're hoping that that temporary fix gets us through until capital funds are, are secured to replace the unit, I know it's going to be on the, the plan for next year, because that unit is, has been in need of every place for a little bit of time, from what I understand. Um, the used compressor uh, came in just shy of five thousand dollars, um, which we were able to cover from um, food service revolving account money. Um, and the last piece I have are just the four warrants that were approved during August of two thousand twenty-one. Um, and those were included in your packet, so that's um, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Bernier, uh, the, um, are there any questions about the financial report? If not, um, you could move on to the Personnel Report. Don't see any hands raised, so if you want to move on to the Personnel Report.
Okay, um, the month of August um, has a lot more activity on it than July did, as, or or last month, as, as you can see, um, we have forty-three new hires on here. Um, and the reason why all those hires are on here now and not last month is because their start dates weren't until, or most of their start dates till August thirtieth. Um, so, um, as I said, most of the, the hiring at this point is done, but there are still several vacancies, primarily uh, with ESPs, uh, which is, that's a problem all over the place. Um, that and, and bus drivers, it's, it's been hard to find employees uh, across the country, even. Um, during uh, the last month, we also had fifteen separations, um, we had um, eleven, I'm sorry, ten resignations, one retirement, and four uh, one-year leaves of absence. Um, I, as you know, from last month, have, have, you know, been looking at, at data, demographic data of um, staff members that are, are leaving to see if, if there's any, you know, sort of patterns or anything like that. Um, the, the demographics of the um, the staff members who resigned uh, in August, uh, seventy-three percent female, twenty-seven percent male, which, which pretty much mirrors our district demographics according to the, um, what's published on the DESI website. Um, that will be updated in October. Um, that gets updated in October of every year, so what's on the DESI website might not completely mirror our demographics, because obviously changes happen between, uh, you know, over a twelve-month period, but uh, from what's there, um, you know, that, that mirrored basically the makeup of our, our, our workforce. Of the uh, the people who resigned as well, we had eighty-two percent of them were white. Um, well, nine percent, uh, which ended up being one staff member was black, and one staff member um, was uh, identified as white and Hispanic, so, um, you know, our, our staff primarily is Caucasian, um, as I mentioned last month. Um, you know, there, there's, I, I don't know that I see enough here to establish any sort of um, you know, pattern of, of staff members of color resigning um, disproportionately, um, because, you know, there haven't been that many individuals that, that have actually done that, but it's certainly data that I will continue to, to look at, to see, um, you know, to see if there's any sort of pattern that we need to investigate or anything, and, you know, I think that also is in line with the, the work that we're doing of, of attempting to increase the diversity of our, our staff, um, here in Northampton. staff here in Northampton. So also, we had twelve transfers, people moving to different positions in the district over the course of last month. So I see that there's a couple of hands up.
Yes, I was going to recognize member Voss with a hand up and follow by member Levy.
Thank you, and thank you for that information. I I know I've been the one the last couple of meetings to just say it feels like we have a lot of veteran teachers not retiring but resigning, and I still feel that way just looking at these. I appreciate that you're looking for patterns very much, Nick. But that isn't, that kind of information is important, but there's other information that's important too, such as you know, our teachers and other educators leaving for better pay in other districts. That's something a school committee really needs to know. We have some fantastic teachers that we'd like to probably keep around and not understanding why some of them are leaving is troubling to me. In particular, I, in preparation for this meeting, looked at the list from the last three meetings when I've asked about exit interviews. And it just seems like a lot of teachers at J F K are leaving, and I wonder if, how many math teachers have been there for more than just a couple of years? And I think the number's pretty low, and these are things our district should understand better. And maybe it's not at this meeting where we spend all the time understanding it, but we should have a sense of what is going, what is driving our teachers to other districts and what we can do to prevent that.
Thank you, member Levy. Member Levy? Think you're we're not getting sound member Levy?
How's that?
Perfect.
Sorry. I also want to echo my gratitude to Nick for looking for sharing that data and and really looking for patterns. My my hope is that as we're looking for patterns, we can we can do so in more of a longitudinal way. I think when we look from month to month to month, we are probably not going to see patterns, but we've got to really compile that data and I think look over like the last five years to look at at who is leaving. And so my hope is, and perhaps that's what you're already doing, Nick. But if not, my hope is that we can we can do that both from the perspective of are we losing folks who hold certain identities? Also, are we losing folks who work at a particular school? Are we losing folks who work in a particular subject matter? I think all of those patterns are going to be really important. And given the fact that we don't have exit interviews right now, we'll need to simply look at the data and begin to ask questions. But exit interviews, just to to support member Voss's point, would allow us to then have a little bit of qualitative data to back up that quantitative data. So I just want to continue to encourage us to do that, but to look in a more longitudinal way.
I I do, member Levy, keep a running spreadsheet. So everything that I've looked at since we had this conversation a couple of months ago is there. So that that, at least, you know, for the last couple of months and going forward, can be looked at longitudinally. It would be quite the undertaking to try to dig back a few years in terms of that, I think. I mean, you know, you could get some basic data, you know, out of like our personnel, you know, accounting software that we use. But in terms of getting any kind of qualitative data, I think that would be extremely difficult at this point.
Yeah, I agree. I think the qualitative data would would be necessary moving forward, but I do hope the quantitative data, I I would imagine our H R, if it's not in this system that you're talking about, our H R office should be able to run a report on the folks who have left, the subjects they've taught and the identities they hold.
It we use the same system as they do. I I they could probably use it better than I in terms of trying to pull that that sort of data. But you know, it's certainly a conversation worth having.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Member Gold, you have your hand up next.
Yeah, I had another thing, but just on this point of the data, if you are doing any, but I think at some point it'd be helpful to have some perspective, right? Because we can look at all the data we want about Northampton, but if we're on par with other districts or not, I mean, that says a lot. So, you know, somewhere down the line to be able to, you know, compare us to similar districts would be helpful rather than just looking at our own hires and all that. And then, but just my last thing, I think we've seen it previously, and if maybe you said it today and I missed it, but I'm I don't know if there's a way to know how many vacancies we still have, like in your personnel report each month, like, you know, where you show like the hires, the the separation, just say, how many vacancies are there?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I could include that in forthcoming months. It's, I can just look at the personnel sheet that I have and and, you know, that that's easy.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bernie or about the about the personnel report? Okay, thank you very much, Nick, and we'll now move on to Dr. Provost and the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time and given the length of the agenda, I'll keep my remarks brief tonight. As you know, schools are now fully open for the first time in eighteen months. We've had to address three COVID-related events, a false positive that resulted in a temporary quarantine of a class, a positive case with multiple contacts and a cluster of cases. I'll just mention now in reference to some of the communications that we heard during public comment, I will be doing an update on our status and we will be making some changes to our health protocols. That will be going out tomorrow. Our struggles with mold and transportation have been well documented, so I won't go into them here. We continue to move forward with the implementation of the D I P. That progress is reflected on two of your agenda items, which would enable us to create a truly centralized registration process as outlined in the DIP. Keeping our schools open really has been a daily struggle for the past two weeks. But we have a great team in place and we're fully committed to continue that struggle with every ounce of our energy for as long as it takes. That's my promise to the community and that's my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. So now we have no items under section six, but we will now move to then section seven. And section seven begins with item A, which is a presentation and vote on revised DIP or district improvement of plan metrics. And I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Provost.
Thank you. I will share my screen to make this conversation more efficient. So this is the revised implementation plan and metrics document. I'm only going to review the new information. The new information is all in red. I'm going to start with page sixteen, which is the first place that has changes. As you recall, the original proposed metrics were about increasing the number of or the percentage of individuals who agreed with statements that would reflect positively on the district. I received some feedback at a prior meeting on also reducing the amount who disagree. So you'll see in red, we now have goals, not only for increasing those who agree or strongly agree, but for reducing those who disagree or strongly disagree.
Provost, I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt. A member Seraphie Cox has her hand raised, and so I wanted to just recognize her quickly.
Thank you, and sorry to interrupt Superintendent Provost. I I was wondering if perhaps we could either table this or put it to the end of our agenda, as I know that there are many items on the agenda that members of the public were here to to hear about, including the vaccination and other, you know, health safe, the safety issues related to the opening of schools. And just as Superintendent Provost was talking about, the opening of schools is of paramount importance right now. So I'm wondering if we can either, also, I would move to to put this at the end of the agenda. Or I don't know if that requires a motion or if as the chair you can just do that.
I'll accept a motion.
Okay.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Again, I just want us to be mindful that we try to, you know, work through our agenda and accomplish these things. We've put off a number of things for several meetings now. Remember Gold, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just say that considering how much we have not, how much we've put this off and the importance of it, I would ask that we keep it where it is and if any other discussions further down that are there rather than move this. So I would be voting no against for this.
Okay, so, all right, so any other comments on this? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
No.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
No.
Mayor Narcoitz?
No.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
No.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four against.
Okay, so this item is moved down toward the end of our new business agenda. And so we will now move on to item B, which is a vote on the M A S C delegate. Member Fallon is listed as the person speaking on this.
Yeah, so just in a nutshell, we need to vote on a delegate and an alternate delegate to vote on behalf of the Northampton School Committee at the M A S C delegate assembly. It is on Saturday, November sixth. While the conference is being held in Hyannis, it's actually being offered virtually. So you can do it from Northampton. It's a Saturday at nine a.m. And typically, we would put on the agenda for October the resolution so that the committee could express their, sort of give you a general idea of how they would like you to vote. And so it's a great opportunity for someone who wants to be involved. I actually cannot attend this year, but I'm happy to instruct anyone who's interested or answer any questions.
Okay. A member Seraphie Cox?
I I was, I have a feeling that it's a little bit of a not it situation. So I was just raising my hand to let folks know that I would be willing to either be the alternate.
Okay. Member Goldman, do you have a similar inquiry or?
I'd like to nominate a committee member to be the M A S C delegate this year.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate a member Levy to represent us at the M A S C annual event.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? On that?
Is member Levy?
Yeah. I'd like to amend my motion and I'd like to make a motion to nominate member Levy to be our M A S C delegate and member Seraphie Cox to be our alternative, our alternate, I mean.
Okay. So I guess I should ask the two members, do you accept this nomination?
I do, and I'm also happy if member Seraphie Cox wants to be the the first one, and I am the second. That's also fine with me. I'm happy to be the delegate. If if that's yeah, up to up to you, member Seraphie Cox.
I I think you can be the delegate. I'll be the alternate. And if your much younger kiddos deem it necessary, I can fill in. I second it.
Okay, okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded to nominate our our delegate and alternate delegate to the M A S C. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold? Member Gold?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon? Oh, he's not here, sorry. And member Levy?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, so thank you to member Levy and member Seraphie Cox for representing us at the upcoming M A S C convention and thank you. And we'll now move on, actually, item C, which was a report from Pam Plummer on the special education audit is being moved to a future meeting date. So we will we will move on then to item D, which is a vote on the section five oh four coordinator job description. And this is one that Dr. Provost has. Remember, Seraphie Cox, is your hand up or is that from the previous discussion?
From the previous discussion.
Just making sure, okay. Dr. Provost, this is a this is a, this is an item that was originally on our last agenda. Do you want to give us a quick overview?
It actually was originally on an agenda many years ago. So we're resurrecting this. This job description was actually presented first to a prior school committee. At that meeting, it was never taken up. In fact, it was taken off the agenda because it was felt there wasn't sufficient funding for the position at the time. Later on, we did find another way in the budget to create a five oh four coordinator. However, we never had the committee approve this budget. I'll take responsibility for forgetting that it was actually not taken up the night it was supposed to be taken up. Now we have another situation where we're trying to find a five oh four coordinator. We actually have an agreement for our potential agreement to resolve some issues that depends on us hiring a section five oh four coordinator. So I'd like to re-present this job description for your approval at this time.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the job description?
A motion to approve the five oh four coordinator judge description.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions about this item? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member, member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
And member Kaufman?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. So that job description is approved finally. So the next item on the agenda is a vote. This is item E. It is a vote to offer the superintendent a successor contract and to authorize the chair to enter into preliminary negotiations with the superintendent subject to school committee approval. Member Seraphie Cox?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to move to offer this superintendent a one-year successor contract to and to authorize the chair to enter into preliminary negotiations with the superintendent subject to school committee approval.
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. I was going to explain by way of background that this is a requirement of our contract, our current contract is to give the superintendent notice. The actual date was the end of June as to whether we would enter into negotiations with him for a successor contract. That got pushed further out into the future because of the summertime and obviously our busy agendas the last several months. So and so typically what has happened in the past is that the super, the committee has authorized me to enter into negotiations, which essentially means negotiations, which essentially means to go to the superintendent and get a proposal from him, uh, to then bring it to the school committee, uh, for consideration, uh, in executive session, um, to negotiate, you know, terms of a potential successor agreement, um. And so the vote really was to enter into negotiations, um, and, uh, so that is really what was, I was seeking this evening. Um, I'm not sure that we, um, will, uh, we get into the details of actual terms of the agreement or length of the agreement. That's typically something that's done in those negotiations within, um, the, the contractual negotiation, so I guess I would have some concern about that in terms of what the current contract says, um. So that's, I guess that those are the concerns I have about the motion, the way it's made. Certainly, um, the committee can, uh, those are, that could be part of the negotiation that can happen, um, but it's generally not, uh, how this process occurs, so I just want to raise a concern about that. Member Seraphy Cox, your hand is up?
I think it's because you didn't take it down.
Oh, sorry about that, okay. So is there any other, uh, folks, member Gold?
Yeah, I guess I would say that, um, what concerns me about, uh, this motion is the, currently thinking about the, the term, uh, especially as the motion I was going to make was to see if we could, uh, make, ensure that when you negotiate that, um, it at least aligns to, um, the length of time of the district improvement plan. Uh, Superintendent Provost and his team have gone to great lengths to develop this plan. There are specific goals and there are specific metrics that the team has, uh, developed and committed to seeing and leading the district towards. And some of those goals, um, as we'll see, that's why, kind of why it's been good to have the district improvement plan ahead of time, um, would go until twenty twenty-four. And so I would hope that we at least offer a contract that extends to the length of the district improvement plan. Um, because cutting it short and putting somebody else in potentially, um, who has not, you know, been part of crafting that plan and in part of setting those goals, I think would be a disservice to our district. Um, and so I would ask, I will be voting no, and I hope that, um, we can reconsider that.
Okay, thank you, member Gold. Member Fallon?
Thanks, I just, I'm a little bit concerned that that that's not actually what the agenda item was stating, and, and I thought this was something that we usually discussed in in executive session as far as, like, I don't know that, that that the length of the contract or the COLA or any of the terms of the contract. I don't think any of us were prepared to vote on or talk about that. I thought that typically you went and spoke to the superintendent and brought back whether he was interested in continuing the contract and what he was asking for to the full committee. And then we discussed it as a group. Am I, am I mistaken?
Yeah, the, the language of our current contract is that the, um, the committee shall notify, uh, the superintendent on or before, um, you know, the date, uh, uh, in writing whether or not it wishes to commence negotiations for an agreement. Um, and so that is the language that's in our contract right now, so, and that was the agreement in the prior one and certainly the one with the prior superintendent before that, so, um, the language is to enter into negotiations, and so, um, that is why the choice is typically, um, to whether or not to notify the superintendent, we wish to negotiate with you or we wish to not negotiate with you, which means that, um, we would begin a process of seeking a new superintendent. Um, so my concern is that, um, offering a contract with a set limit that has no other provisions in it, um, is not in the spirit of that contract agreement that we have to actually negotiate the agreement, which includes the terms of the agreement, it includes compensation, it includes all of those other pieces, um. So I wanted to be mindful of that, and so I guess I would, I would ask member Seraphy Cox if she would consider a friendly amendment to that, to enter into negotiations, um, and then allow the school committee to discuss this as a body, um, in executive session, um, as part of a regular negotiation.
Um, yes, I think that, uh, I, you know, just seeing it on the agenda and the information that we were sent ahead of time, uh, did not have that much context, so I was, I was imagining that it might be, uh, it's something that, that it was going to be a more open process. I, I do, uh, not, not that I'm saying that that's what I, I, I like the idea of negotiating in executive session is what I, uh, is one thing that I will say. I do hope that, um, that deliberations about, uh, about that contract can happen respectfully without, uh, Superintendent Provost present, um. I think that, you know, we've seen that that has been important with, uh, with past negotiations, so, um, that is, that with those, with those, uh, as you said earlier, editorials, um, I would, uh, accept that friendly amendment, um, and I, um,
So the motion-
I, I guess I would just say that, like, knowing that, knowing that the terms of the contract are still up for negotiation and that that's not something that we need to decide tonight. That, that is what makes me more comfortable.
Exactly, that is completely true, and, and, uh, and typically, um, the superintendent would not participate in deliberations, uh, you know, during the executive session, but certainly that, um, as we've done with other, the other two administrative positions that we negotiate with, they could be brought into direct negotiations, um, but, but certainly we would deliberate as a body, um, without the superintendent, um, as part of the contract negotiation, that is correct, and so discuss, yeah, discuss terms, et cetera. Um, and then obviously for the public, all of these, all of this information would become, um, public once the uh, contract is signed and the executive session minutes are released, so yes, this does not, this is not binding to any type of contract or term of contract, it's, it's really to just, um, uh, follow through with our obligation to let, uh, to let the superintendent know whether we intend to, to enter negotiations on a new contract or not, um. And so really, the, the, my request would be that the vote be to enter into negotiations, um, for a successor contract, and then to then work out those details as a school committee in those negotiations.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, member Voss?
Thank you for that explanation, um, I have a, another question, which is what is the timeline for what you just described, Mayor Narcoitz, so, um, and in particular, on my mind is that we're going to have a new school committee coming in on January and, um, I, you, you know, that, there's nothing wrong with that, I just wonder if this school committee is going to be having these executive sessions to talk about what the appropriate contract might be? Or will that be something the next school committee is doing? What do you envision for that?
Well, my, um, what I would envision is that, um, I would come back to you at, at our very next meeting, and we would have an executive session. Um, and at that point, I would have a very clear, uh, you know, proposal from the superintendent to bring to you. Um, you know, this is the super, this is the committee that evaluated the superintendent and just completed his most recent evaluation. And, um, and we did evaluate that he was meeting up standards, and so I think it is makes sense that we would then be working with him on this successor contract, and so we, the, the goal would be to have this contract, um, in place. I mean, one of the reasons why this clause is in our contract is that typically the time, um, for when, when searches occur for new superintendents, um, they'd be starting now, um, so they'd be starting, you know, uh, late fall, um, into January, because obviously if you're trying to find someone who's available and looking for a superintendency that would start that school year, um, you would not wait until, you know, into the spring or, or, you know, late spring or into the summer. Um, so that was why this clause was in here, and so that's why, um, my expectation would be that at your next meeting, um, I, I would, um, be bringing a proposal to you, and again, this is a, um, this is, this would be the third contract, um, so there's, um, you know, the, the language, um, did not change between the first and second contract, it's really would be a question of terms and, um, and, uh, and, you know, the, uh, compensation, changes in compensation that just naturally occur, you know, from contract to contract, so, um, I don't think it'll be complex or complicated, so my expectation would be that, um, it would be something that could be completed, um, poten- potentially by, uh, the next meeting, um, in executive session, and then finalized. Okay, um, so, um, so I believe the, uh, the, the motion then that has been made and seconded would be for the school committee to enter into, um, negotiations with the superintendent for a successor contract. Um, and is there any further questions? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
And member Goldman?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, thank you very much, um, the next item on the agenda is a vote for the C P P I job descriptions, um. And I believe Dr. Provost, that one is assigned to you. Um, Kaia, uh, member Goldman, you have your hand up?
I do, I just was wondering if in light of the motion to move, um, part A to the end of the thing, I'd like, I wonder if we could prioritize sec vote L O Q R, I mean, and S, my vote, um, to move dip was really about prioritizing the topics that people were waiting for and that needed to be put in place this evening, uh, to move the school year forward. I agree, job postings are incredibly important and, and those are important to me as well, but I, that's, I'm wondering if we could prioritize those other items.
Um, so the, the request would be then that we move to, uh, uh, that we just basically move down the agenda and go to item, um, you said L was one of them? Um, or?
Yes, L because right now this would be the last school committee meeting where we could be fully remain remote.
Okay, um,
Right.
Yes, I mean, we, we are, we are asking to formalize that, but, um, certainly I think we could make the decision to stay remote without it, but it's important for us to do that, um, so that's fine. Member, I'm sorry, Dr. Provost, did you have a question?
I would just like to say that I think it's very important that we address the C P P I coordinator, uh, or, or the C P P I job descriptions tonight. I think we can do them really quickly. But I know that not addressing them in the last meeting has had an impact on some of our employees, and so I'd really like to advocate for that having a high priority.
Thank you. I'm ha- I'm fine with that.
Okay, um, so, member Kaufman?
Uh, pass, sorry.
Okay. Um, so, uh, um, member Goldman, are you then withdrawing your request? And we can move on with the C P P I?
Yes, I, well, I'm not withdrawing my request, I am comfortable with the C P P I, I'm just, I'm just saying that often we highlight, um, votes that um, we have guests or public that are, have particular interest in, and, um, I know that I just want to make sure that we're not keeping the public up too late with such a long agenda, such as face coverings and vaccine requirements, that sort of thing.
Okay, um, uh, okay, um, so I guess the, so then, um, the question would be then to whether the committee wants to move down into some of the lower, um, items related, specifically related to COVID and, and health policy and et cetera. Um, I guess that's the question that I, that you're, that you're posing. I think the, I, I don't, I think the, um, I think the school committee remaining remote is probably less important than the C P P I job description in terms of, um, ranking these things, so I, that one I'm not so sure I'd want to skip ahead to, um,
Sure, that, of course.
Member Voss, did you have a question?
I'm just gonna make a slightly modified proposal, which is, um, that, letter K, I would propose moving down, um, but then just go in order, but when you get to the first one about the COVID stuff in the schools, lump them together such as N, O, Q and S. Um, but I think these other ones, and maybe Dr. Provost can confirm this, to me seem very quick, and we just go through them.
Yeah, I'd rather, I think we're, I think I, I worry that we're, um, wasting time talking about not wasting time, so, and I think we could probably move through them r- rather quickly, so, um, um, and I, you know, these are items-
That's fine with me, thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, so yeah, so I think I, I think we, I think I'd like to sort of force us to be more efficient with our time and just get through these job descriptions, which I think are fairly non-controversial, and just, let's just get them out of the way, um, and, and then get into the heart of the agenda, um, just because we have been putting them off, um, so, um, okay, so let's, let's just go back, uh, then go ahead, Dr. Provost, with the C P P I job description.
Thank you, so there are actually two positions in your, uh, packet. There's a parent-child home coordinator, and then there's a preschool coordinator. When we were involved with the process of accreting the other parent-child home coordinator to the, it was actually the E S P unit. Uh, we said that we needed to do a reorganization in order to afford that position. That involved the elimination of a position, a position that was priorly formally held by Erica Frank, and now, um, that position will not be renewed. Instead, these two positions will be, well, uh, the preschool coordinator already exists, some additional duties will be added to it that were formerly, um, formerly held by Erica Frank, and then the rest of the money from that unfilled position would go to create the second parent-child home coordinator. So when we were discussing sort of the package of changes that needed to take place in order to accrete that position, these two job descriptions describe all those changes that we were referring to at that time.
Okay, is there a motion to approve these, uh, two job descriptions? Member Gold?
Motion to approve these two job descriptions.
Okay, okay, is there a second? Um, are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
No.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yeah.
And member Voss?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one against.
Okay, um, moving on, Dr. Provost, to the next, uh, job description, uh, farm-to-school coordinator?
This is a position that was, uh, created through the, uh, grant that member Bizansky was instrumental in getting for the district. The position was formally held with Grow Food North Hampton. We found that to be a very useful position, it's allowed us to increase the number of, or the amount of locally grown food served in our school lunch program. And so the grant is ending and we would like to continue that position. It's a very part-time position, um, so it really would not qualify for benefits or, or in, or to be within the units. However, it could really help us to continue the momentum that we've, we've started through the, the use of that position in the grant, so this is basically just a job description that would bring the position that was already existing and under Grow Food North Hampton into the food service department.
Okay, member Busansky, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would, a motion to approve the farm-to-school coordinator position.
Okay, the motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Oh, yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
And member Gold?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a vote uh by the school commit um to surplus three school roofs uh for a solar array lease. Dr. Provost, do you want to, I know the school committee authorized you to um to uh investigate this and work with the central services and work with the generous donors who are wishing to donate these three arrays? Um, and so do you have anything to add?
Yes, just for the public that these would be cited at Bridge Street, Ryan Road in Leeds, which are the three schools that we just put new roofs on, which is why um it makes sense to put arrays on top of those roofs. That the estimated savings for the school department would be four thousand dollars per year in electricity costs. And most importantly, because I know the school committee is very concerned about climate change and green energy, that these these arrays would offset um five, the emissions created by five school buses. So which would be our entire fleet. Um, so I think that that's, that I I think that this should be strongly supported by the school committee.
Member Voss?
I would like to make a motion to surplus the three school roofs for the solar array lease. And also just to add that, um, well, somebody can second it and then I can add, I guess.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, yeah, we discussed this on the Budget and Property Subcommittee last month, and I was really impressed by the proposals and everything that had gone into figuring them out. And thank you to the group that's doing this with and for us. Um, I think this is really exciting for our district.
Excellent, thank you so much. And um if you approve this tonight, it'll then go immediately to the city council at their next meeting because they would then um effectuate the final surplus by the city and we can get the lease in place and hopefully get the installation um going. So um any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, uh please vote yes. Call the roll.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, um, moving right along, item I, we have a vote to surplus a specialized equipment for sale. Uh Nick, this is listed for you. Could you give us a quick explanation of this?
Sure, um, a while back, uh this was originally on the August agenda. Smith Vocational um and Agricultural High School reached out to our Director of Special Services or Student Services, um Dr. Pam Plummer, um about basically purchasing some specialized uh equipment from us. The specialized equipment um is basically a receiver for an FM system um for um a student who has difficulty hearing. Rather than have Smith purchase a brand-new one, um which would cost about twice as much as we're proposing to surplus this for, um, the the receiver is already configured for the student. So it would, you know, make their transition to Smith a lot smoother than having to, you know, go out and get a new one and and get that process taken care of. There there's certainly no reason not to do that. It would make that that student's transition a lot easier. Um, so I just had to do a little bit of research about what a fair price would would be based on its depreciation and its age and it would cost eight hundred seven dollars brand-new and and based on its age. We uh in talking with Smith decided four hundred dollars would be a fair price um for that. They're willing to do that. Since the August agenda, or since the August meeting rather, Smith actually is going to purchase one more of these things from us for four hundred dollars. Um, and actually, um, Union Twenty-Eight School in Irving um as well, we had a student move there, um and they would like to purchase uh specialized hearing equipment as well. The equipment question there would be um receivers and an FM system. Based on the age of the FM system, um and its depreciation value, we were going to charge four hundred dollars for each of the receivers and the FM system, totally eight hundred. So um we just need the committee's approval to, in order to make that official. Uh and then afterwards, the the funds would just go to the general fund because the accounts that those items were purchased from are are long closed. There's there's nowhere for me to deposit those, so they're they're just going to go into the general fund.
Okay, so the um, so the motion requested would be a motion um uh for this, to surplus this equipment uh for sale to these um sister districts, so to essentially to follow the children that are uh the students that are moving to these other districts. Is there a motion?
Uh, motion to surplus uh the three items, three, correct?
Second.
Four.
Four.
Okay. Okay, um, is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy? Member Levy, did you speak and I didn't hear you? I'm gonna, I'll skip over her for now. Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
And member Levy?
Sorry, there's this mute button on my thing. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. The vote is nine in favor. Mr. Mayor, I don't think we can hear you.
Sorry about my my mistake and having the same mute button issue. So the next item on the agenda is item K. It's actually a discussion. There's not an actual uh vote associated with it. I guess I would ask whether um uh whether uh member Levy would allow us to move that discussion to the end, knowing that we have these other votes that we have to take versus a discussion?
Sorry, I was moving rooms and I believe you you froze while I or I froze. So I only heard part of that. Are you asking me to to uh push this discussion off? My answer would be yes, if that's what the question was.
Yeah, it was basically to, I mean, there was a question anyway about whether this should be, it should have been under uh school committee discussion topics anyway, um because it was a discussion and not something with a set vote. It's um, so I guess I was asking if you'd be okay if we just kept going on the votes and then picked this up at the end, if we have the time.
Yes, I actually would uh would prefer that we push this to our next meeting uh because of the length of this meeting.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I think we might be skipping another one, the math interventionist.
Yes, um, yes, indeed. I I got a little too quick with my uh with my checkmarks there, so we'll go back to that one, sir. I just, so I guess I'm preemptively asking you if it was okay um after J. So let's take up J, which is a one-year math interventionist position at JFK, and go to Dr. Provost.
So as you'll recall, in the budget process, we added the culture coach at the middle school, which allowed us to free up a teacher to be a second math interventionist at the middle school. Based on the screening results we had in the winter, we thought that doubling of intervention support for the middle school would be sufficient. However, I said at the time, we needed to really be flexible with this and take a look at the spring results and allow for the possibility of making some adjustments. Based on the the spring screening data, as well as performance of middle school students on the spring MCAS, we don't feel that two positions is sufficient in order to address the acceleration needs we have at the middle school. So we'd like to add a third math interventionist. Um, this, the hope would be that this would be a one-year position um to deal with the the gaps we're seeing and to get kids caught up. And then we could fall back to the pattern that we had established in the budget of having two interventionists at the middle school. So we, um, as Nick said, we do have ESRS two funds and ESRS three funds that could be tapped for this um this this purpose, and I think it's in a very excellent use of those funds. It's right on point to helping us with the recovery process from COVID. So this is a request, essentially a budgetary request for us to be able to access the ESRS funds in order to support a third interventionist at the middle school.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this one-year math interventionist at JFK?
Motion to approve the one-year math interventionist at JFK.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Kaufman, seconds. Is there any discussion? Uh, member Gold?
Yeah, Dr. Provost, you, Dr. Provost, you said that it would be a uh one-year position. And I recall when the budget um property meetings and even maybe in the whole school committee meeting, you talked about um the challenge of doing a one-year position and all the repercussions, like we actually had talked about. Can we do temporary positions rather, and you you advised us against that. And so if you could just speak to that for me, that'd be great.
That's correct. Um, but as was discussed briefly earlier in the evening, we seem to always have math vacancies. My expectation is that when this position ends, it's very likely that we would have another position we could move the person into so we wouldn't have a unemployment liability for the district.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all right, there's a motion made and seconded to create this one-year math interventionist position. No further discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes, sir.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
And member Fallon?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Excellent, thank you. So that is approved. Um, and um I, as previously discussed with member Levy, um we are going to put off this discussion to a future meeting. Thank you, member Levy, for that. Um, and so we'll move to item L, um which is a vote to essentially um as indicate that the school committee will remain uh in remote meeting status uh through the end of 2021. Um, and this is actually would align us with what the city council did. Um, and because of the indoor mask mandates, um et cetera, it does not really seem plausible or feasible for us to attempt to do a hybrid-style in-person meeting. So I think this makes good sense. So would someone be willing to make a motion to that effect?
Motion?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, member Gold?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, just switched my headphones. Um, I'll be voting no to this and to the extension um because I don't see the rationale behind saying that we can't hold a hybrid meeting. I've seen it happen with my own eyes repeatedly throughout this COVID crisis. And I see every day teachers teaching with masks on, speaking to roomfuls of children. Um, and I don't see why we as the school committee can't do that as well. Um, and I I think it's, it, I, yeah, I just don't see the rationale behind it, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, um, any further comments? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Just want to double-check, yes vote means vote, what's the yes vote mean, Mayor Narcoits?
Just be remote for the remainder of the term.
Thank you, yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
No.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
And member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one against.
Okay, so that motion um is adopted. The next item on the agenda is a vote on the 2021, uh 2022 school calendar. And I believe there's a change that had to be made, Dr. Provost?
Yes, so first of all, let me apologize for bringing you a calendar with an error in it. The only explanation I can have is that with the new holidays in the calendar, I was so focused on making sure that we still got the hundred and eighty student, teach student um learning days in that I was paying less attention to making sure that I got a hundred and eighty-five teacher workdays in and actually ESP workdays in as well. All I can say is I did send this through many eyes, including the union who thought that the right, the first calendar was right. And I have put this um, this new calendar past the union as well, and they agreed that it was short one day on teacher workdays. So we are adding um November second as a professional development day. Um, that will bring us up to one eighty-five on teacher workdays. And that means that the last day of school would move to uh June twenty-second.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this revised 2021, 2022 calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Member Busanski?
Uh, thank you. So first a question for uh JFK and the high school, what would be their final day due to the mold issue?
So their final day right now would be June twenty-third because you can think of it as if they have one snow day that everyone else didn't get.
Okay, and I am just, I'm wondering as this calendar is going later and later and now with the mold prom at the middle school and high school, if there isn't a way to push a teacher professional development day to the end of the year so that kids um don't have to go any later. For example, that uh November second day, but that's probably election day as I'm looking at it more closely. And maybe that's why.
That's correct. We also felt that there would be lots of concerns, especially on this, since it's a general election. Not that it's for, you know, major offices, but there'll be public in the building. And we felt there would be safety concerns, um especially in the era of COVID with so many members of the public accessing our schools. So I think that that, it makes sense to do the professional development day then.
I I beg your pardon about major offices? Um, I didn't hear that. What did you say, Dr. Pro?
Most important race of all is happening.
And are there, I just, I haven't studied it long enough to see if there are any other opportunities to make up that day so that middle school and high school doesn't go another day later. It also screws up, I think, you know, the balance of first semester compared classes versus second semester classes, and we always run into this problem with AP classes at the high school that the APs are given at the beginning of May and or sometime in May. I think it is like the first week in May typically, pre-COVID at least. And so our kids are uh shorted a lot of time in preparing for the AT AP and then have a lot of extra time. So it just all doesn't, you know, it's all, yeah.
So a couple of responses to that. When we realized we had the situation at the high school, which was the first situation where we had mold, I reached out to the union and said, there are three ways we could resolve this. One way would be to essentially give up the teacher workday prior to the first day of school um and just have 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 students start on Thursday, which could have happened, but it would have meant the teachers wouldn't have the day to set up their classroom. The other thing would have been to take a day out of April vacation. And then the third option was to um just add a day on like a snow day. The the preference of the of the NACE leadership was just to treat it as a snow day. In a lot of ways, that was easier, um, because that's a a system that we already have set up. So that's what I would say about exploring the options regarding uh this year. I do think in the long term, there's an issue though, and I have, I have expressed that. As we have contract discussions, we may want to think about doing something different. Either allowing the school year to start earlier um or or doing something else with vacations so that we're able to end earlier. Because we will be facing heat in the end of June and that will become its own issue.
Exactly. Okay, so you don't see any other room in the calendar to make up that day?
Not, not any other day that I've already sort of discussed and and sort of had rejected. sort of had rejected by, by the folks who represent the teachers.
Got it.
And all employees, not just teachers.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to approve this revision to the 2021-22 school calendar, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narkowitz.
Yes.
Member Bisansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
And member Levy.
Yes.
Your vote is nine in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, uh, thank you to the committee for working expeditiously to get through these early items in our agenda. And we now are at item N, which is the first of a series of discussions related to health-related policies. This next item, item N, is a discussion and possible vote. This is related to the role, role of the school committee in making health-related decisions pertaining to students and staff. This is an item that the vice chair requested, and I would turn it over to member Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Narkowitz. We're actually making good time tonight, so thank you. So yeah, I'm not sure if this is a discussion only or a vote. Hopefully it'll be quick, but let's see. So in my, in my thinking, decision-making regarding the health and safety of our students, especially as it relates to the many COVID-related matters such as mask wearing and social distancing and vaccinations and other practices and requirements are, are just not entirely clear to me. I think as a primary example, we have this health advisory committee in place. And to date, it seems to me that and I believe other committee members, by the way, that this advisory group has made some of the decisions so far or recommendations to Dr. Provost to follow. And that's what we've done. Yet, at the same time, we have in our agenda this evening at least three other items, which puts the school committee in charge of voting to modify or change existing procedures. So honestly, this is confusing to myself, and I was hoping to get some clarity. I've talked to a couple of members really quickly, and their understanding is, was that the health advisor committee makes decisions. And I can live with that personally, but I just don't think everybody's on the same page. So I'm really not sure whether we should be discussing on voting on some of the items that we have coming up very shortly without further clarity. So that's my goal in bringing this up. So I thought I'd ask Dr. Provost some quick questions for clarity, and then maybe I'll make a proposal or certainly hear some feedback some from colleagues. But Dr. Provost, can you just please remind the community again about who is on the health advisory committee? And how regularly they meet? And also, if you can add what role they believe they have and want to have as it relates to health-related decisions pertaining to our students and staff? Sure, I will start with teacher reps because Chris McHugh just happens to be on my front screen right now. So the health advisory committee has a teacher rep. It has a school nurse. It has an ESP. Those three positions are appointed by the NACE president. It also has Lisa Lisa Saffron, who's our, our director of health, safety and equity programs, what most people would think of as a nurse supervisor. Also a NACE member. The other members of the committee are the health director and the public health nurse. We meet every Wednesday at 2:30. We discuss the issues that are presenting themselves in the district. And they advise me on shifts that we need to make around protecting the health and safety of our students. Some recent, some recent ones that will be, you know, familiar to you, a discussion of masking on sidelines at athletic games. As well as the shift that we made most recently to pull back on test and stay. And as I've highlighted a couple of times tonight, I'll also be communicating tomorrow about a change in masking policy based on the discussion that we had last Wednesday, yesterday. So, you know, I would just say that this situation is very dynamic. We need to be able to make decisions and sometimes change on a weekly basis. And so I have found the ability to meet with this group and get their input and advice very helpful. Yeah, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. Didn't know. I was going to ask you those questions, and I'm glad you remembered your colleagues. One thing I did ask you to ask the team, I don't know if you had a chance, is what do they see as their role as it relates to these health decisions? Do they see their role as advisory to us as a school committee? Do they want to be in charge of making decisions? Do they have a best scenario in mind that they want to present? Because again, I'm trying to figure out the best way to proceed and not knowing where they want to be in these decision-making processes is important for us to know. Well, I don't think I can speak for them all, so I won't try to do that. I will say that one of the issues with the JLMC, which is the, the previous version of this group was that they felt that it was becoming I don't want to say too political, but I'll say too exposed as a, as a group that was open, that was subject to open meeting law. I think they felt that they couldn't have the the very difficult conversations that, that they, they felt that they needed to have. And so I think the move to the health advisory committee instead of the JLMC was done in, in part because the group didn't want to be a policymaking body. It wanted to be an advisory committee to me. Okay, so are they, they're advising you and you're making a decision or they're advising? Are, are, are they advising you and you're making a decision? Is that how you would describe it? That's correct. Okay. Say that, you know, I very closely follow their advice, you know? We debate things and sometimes we're not all on the same page at the beginning, but we, we try to get to consensus at the end. And are there times that you, that they disagree with you and you follow? Times that, that I do something that they don't recommend? Is that what you're saying? No, I guess the opposite, that you had something in mind, but they convince you otherwise. I'm trying to understand the dynamic. That's, that's happened several times. Yeah. So I guess my last question is, so we have these items tonight, which seem to be very much policy-driven, which is our role. And, you know, very definitive things that at least one, I lost count, maybe two school committee members have brought up. And then you're also talking about changing the mask-wearing decision, which I'm not sure where that arose from. So how do you see this working out if we have a school committee that's going to be setting policy on a monthly basis while you're also meeting weekly with the health advisory board? Am I missing something? Or is there, is there is there something here I'm missing? Because to me, it's just very confusing about who actually is doing this and who's making the decisions. You know, I, I haven't, I haven't recommended these items. So, you know, I think it's important to understand that. I would say if, you know, if the school committee wants to have more of a role, they should probably meet every Wednesday night. So that I can bring the, you know, the discussion from the health advisory committee and they can enact it into policy. Okay. So all right, so I'm, I'm still as confused as I was, and maybe can someone make a stab at explaining it to me if, if they're clearer on the relationship between the advisory committee and the school committee in terms of setting these policies and procedures regarding COVID-related health decisions?
So we do have a hand up, and I'll, I'll go to that. I guess I would just, I would only you know, refer you back to this committee's quite long discussion about this issue and, and part of it took place as part of our as part of our negotiations around an MOU and how, what the best way to structure this advisory role. And so we did make a very conscious decision to not have the school committee play a direct role and instead to, to have this be an advisory body of health experts and, and staff to the superintendent. So I will just affirm the way that the superintendent has described this. And, and I'll turn now to member Voss, who I think herself at the time had argued that we did not want to be in this role any, any longer. And so I think supported the change to moving the school committee off of that committee. So I'll turn to member Voss who has her.
I actually, I, I I, I don't remember it that way. I feel like what happened last year, we dissolved the JLMC for a lot of reasons. And I'm not going to take time to go into all of them right now. But I actually wanted to echo Mr. Member Kaufman's comments and say, thank you for getting this on the agenda. I had the very same question. I tried to ask it in the meeting in August. I tried to email this question to the superintendent several times over the last few weeks, and we weren't communicating. I wasn't expressing my question well. I wasn't getting it answered. But this, you've really nailed it. It's not, I'm still confused too. And I want to add to this discussion. Most school committees tend to vote on things that are safety-related to COVID, such as vaccines, masks, situations with masks, other things. And so I had a lot of back and forth, and I was told it had to be in the policy. So that's why I put, I didn't even get a few things I wanted on the agenda related to COVID that I think now with Delta raging are super important. But we got one of them on there with the policy on masks. And I'm not even sure that's where this belongs because COVID changes so quickly that to put it in a policy seems too slow to me. So I think this is a really important question. I don't know who's in charge of making these decisions, but I think we need to answer it for the public and for ourselves. And if this committee wants to be advisory, which it sounds like it wants to be, I fully support that. Somebody needs to own these decisions. Right now, we're doing things that are not best practice, and I don't want to, I want to vote on them. I want to be able to say if you're not going to do certain things to keep kids safe that are best practices and schools that have been in session for a month have learned. It's not on me when somebody gets sick. So I think it's very important for this committee to own some of these discussions. And what, what I would envision is this health advisory committee reports should be at a meeting to tell us when changes need to be made. We heard a lot about things in the public comments, and I'm going to echo those. Those have been in my emails the last few weeks. But we need to own this. We need to figure out how to keep everybody as safe as possible. And one final example, someone shared with me is, yes, we have a director of public health. There was a proposal, as you know, a couple of years ago to eliminate pesticides where children play. The Board of Health voted for that ordinance. The Director of Public Health didn't. And I share that because we are the elected officials and we are hearing from our constituents. I've heard from so many constituents with specific problems. And the people on this health advisory committee are not necessarily hearing the range of things that we are hearing. And so I don't know what this looks like in terms of our ability to participate, but it definitely needs to be better defined. And if we aren't going to vote on it, those constituents need to know who to reach out to to share their very valid concerns.
Right. I agree. So do I still, can I get the floor back, Mayor Narkowitz?
You sure can. I, I just want to be clear that I think the superintendent's been very clear that he's making the decisions based on an input from the, from, you know, from this health advisory committee. And he's been the one on the robo calls, and he's been the one, you know, directly communicating by letter or robo call. So I, I don't know that there's confusion that he's announcing these decisions, but go ahead.
Well, I, I would just bring up again, if, if that was clear to everybody, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you on this, Mayor Narkowitz. But if that was clear to everybody, then why do we have these three other policies to vote on tonight? To me, that seems contradictory. It really does. So policies related to vaccinating, vaccinating adults to two or three ideas that member Voss wanted to share. And then I think there's a third. So what I'm going to do just to push this discussion is first of all, I, I, so member Voss and I are in the same agreement. And I think part of the reason we keep getting emails from the community is that the community is not clear on this. So it really would be helpful for the community to know whether we're making decisions or whether the health advisory committee are making decisions. And maybe we could beef up the communications between the health advisory committee and and us. But I guess what I would like to do is propose, you know, let me just say too that this is where member Voss and I disagree is at. I don't, I don't remotely feel as well qualified to make decisions around this. As the members of the Northampton Health Advisory Committee, I've been quite pleased with their role so far. I think it's worked very effectively. I think the data demonstrates that. I don't come close to their knowledge. I think member Voss probably does. I don't come close to their knowledge about making health-related decisions, and I never will. And I don't think that's why I was elected. So this is a really unique situation we're in, but I personally would like to propose then that we allow the Northampton Health Advisory Committee to make the health-related decisions pertaining to our students and staff as it relates to the many COVID-related matters. And we could work out the details about how, how we get to, and I know we can now ask questions. But maybe member Voss or other people have ideas about how we can still be involved with it. But I guess that's a proposal I would like to make and see if there's a, a sense of agreement with that or not.
Member Levy, your hand is up.
Thanks. I am confused about whether a health advisory committee has the authority to set policy for our district. If we want a policy that says, that states that all employees of the district need to need to be vaccinated, I, my understanding is that's the, that's the purview of the school committee. That's the authority the school committee has. So what is the, it's, it's really, I mean, I, I mean this as an honest question. What is the authority of the health advisory committee? And if they're advising you, Superintendent Provost, do you have the authority to set those policies without the school committee?
So I would say, I just want to be clear that that particular item has, was, was is, is a little bit different from the other sort of policy-related ones because it does involve a clear change in work conditions. And so we, and we know that we have to collectively bargain it, and we have had discussions with NACE about it. So that's in sort of a different category, the vaccination one. And that's not something that the I think that I'm, I'm sure that the health advisory committee would support it, but it's not something that they is not a policy decision that they made. It's, it's been a discussion that's happened with our, with our, with our staff members, employees and, and, and the administration. And so it's being brought to, it's sort of being brought as a separate item because it does fall under that working condition requirement and will require collective bargaining. So I just want to clarify about that one. But obviously masking ones are slightly different. And then some of the other items that that member Voss wanted us to bring forward around actual conduct of students and within buildings and, and things like that. So
I had nothing about conduct of students, sorry.
I, what I meant was like students talking in the building. That what, when that you had asked if we could put a, an item about how, how and when children could speak during lunchtime. That was one of, that was just one of the items that we were concerned was not really a typical policy for the school committee. It was more of an operational issue and again falls under that, that that gray area. So I mean, I guess my question is, we, we, we I think it's sort of this balancing act, I think, between our policies, which we go through a very deliberative process. We have a committee. We have obviously, all of our meetings have to be posted 48 hours in advance versus real-time decisions that have to be made about ever-changing data, ever-changing conditions, clusters that may occur, changes in, you know, guidance that are coming down every day from DPH or from CDC. And so I guess it's sort of how do we strike the balance between how that works. And so obviously, like something like a mask policy, that's one that I believe that I believe the face covering one, item O, is one that Dr. Provost is bringing forward to align it with, with, with a, with a code of conduct. But I, I, again, I guess that's, this is the balancing act we have to strike. And I definitely believe we should be making larger policy. I guess it's more about the operational decisions related to COVID, the immediate day-by-day, you know, hour-by-hour type decisions and, and how how we could do that. And so I think that's why we've delegated, I mean, at least that's how it came out of the JLMC process was to, to delegate this not to the school, from the school committee, but to have a health advisory that would make these advice, advice to the superintendent. And then he would be empowered to make those decisions. So that's just my two cents. Member Fallon.
Thanks. You said a lot of what I was going to say that with these changes having so quickly that I, I don't think that it's something that the school committee wants or should have purview over. And as far as the policies, I, I mean, we already passed the face covering policy. And as far as the policies, I, I mean, we already passed the face covering policy and we never voted to rescind it. And so it would have to come back to us if there are any changes, except for the fact that I hope people haven't forgotten that there's also still a policy in place where we gave the superintendent the authority to, to amend policies as necessary during the pandemic, kind of an emergency, um, policy covering because we only meet once a month and we do require notice. And so that policy is also still in effect. And then as far as the vaccinations, you know, that falls under contracts. So to me, it's pretty clear that I think the health advisory committee should have the decision-making over health issues and that if it's a policy or, or something that affects our employee contracts, that it would come to us. Um, and I, and I'm comfortable with that. I don't feel qualified to be making health-related decisions. Um, I think the biggest question is, is if constituents would like to, um, pass information along, how does that information get to the people who are making these decisions? And I think that perhaps the answer is to make sure that we always forward emails to the superintendent if they come to just us, um, as committee members, to make sure that he's aware of what our constituents are thinking and feeling as he's the one who's adjusting, um, policies in, in real time.
You're muted.
Sorry, Member Voss.
Thank you. So, um, I don't disagree with what you're proposing. I do think we need to make it clear. I will say, um, I think it's important to acknowledge the JLMC last fall at least was pretty dysfunctional and several oops, that was the puppy. Several members, um, including myself stepped off. And, um, as one example, many of those members felt that ventilation just didn't matter in our school buildings. And I think it's important to point out that there's so much changing with COVID. Um, this group did not want to be responsible for, um, say voting on this kind of stuff. So I, I think it's not quite as cut and dry as we're making it. And maybe that's okay, but we should acknowledge who has control over what and what these different roles are. Um, I guess in terms of the mask policy, I agree. So I, I just want to clarify. I asked Dr. Provost to make some changes. I think they're really good changes. They're now in edits to the mask policy because that's what he asked me to do. I would have been fine with him saying, yeah, I can change this in an emergency situation with COVID and I'm going to change it. But that didn't happen and I, as a school committee member, don't know how to bring the concern of my constituents to the group stronger other than asking for what seemed to be pretty reasonable changes. I think we're actually there by tomorrow. So that's really good. Um, but the amount of, um, concern people have had, an amount of emails that have gone back and forth between a lot of constituents has been really, um, frustrating for them as they worry about whether or not their unvaccinated kids are going to get to pick something up unknowingly and bring it home to, um, compromised family members. That's one example. There's other examples. And sometimes I think this advisory committee isn't hearing from the range of constituents and understanding all of the concern. So maybe Member Fallon, that's the solution is to specifically ask for all these emails to be forwarded to them. Um, I also want to say I agree about the policy with the vaccination of staff and why it's a negotiating issue. Um, what's not on the agenda, which I maybe will make a friendly amendment for is I, there's ways to vaccinate some of our students and I'll talk about that later, but as an example, I don't know where that falls. I guess that's a policy. No, I'm done.
Okay, Member Gold.
Yeah. So am I hearing correctly that or am I getting the right sense that item O we're saying is a school committee uh, domain? Item Q would be a health advisory domain?
No, Q, Q is clearly a school committee domain, as I, as I stated earlier. Yeah.
So Q is a clearly a school committee domain because of.
Because it involves a change of bargain conditions and requires collective bargaining. Yes. So that's clearly within our, we, only we could make that decision and we have to negotiate it.
And so is, what is there some, is there, what is the item on here that you think might just be the health advisories domain?
They didn't put it on.
Oh, okay. So there's nothing tonight. Cool. So there's nothing tonight that you're thinking that, so in regards to what Member Kaufman was saying, there's nothing tonight that is, we're thinking should be the health advisory. Okay.
I, I, I can put my hand up.
Sure. Um, um, go ahead, Member Voss.
But I think it actually fits in this discussion of what is within the school committee domain of discussion and what is not. So I will give you an example. Um, many parents have, and, and I may not have the rules quite right. So Dr. Provost or somebody else, please feel free to correct me. Um, parents of especially elementary school-aged kids have reached out to me and their concern is, um, when will they get notified if a child in their child's classroom tests positive? And their understanding is if their child isn't deemed to be either three or six feet, I think it's six, from the positive testing child, um, for more than 15 minutes, even though they were in the same class, breathing the same air for the entire day, they won't be told. And it's come back that some in our, some of our, um, city hired staff think that that's an issue of privacy. And I think it's a much bigger discussion than that. And so the question is, does the school committee get to talk about that? Or do we just, um, pass the baton on that kind of thing? And where I have a really big problem is what I said earlier. If, if a kid is exposed, um, but they're not within six feet and considered a close contact, yet they have family members who are really compromised, that family deserves to know that they should probably test their family members and get lined up for antibodies if they test positive. And a couple of days can make a difference in that person's outcome. And so we let our families know when there's lice in the school. We let our families know when there's chicken pox in the school. And I would think that if there was a positive case in the classroom, it would be, um, reasonable for the families in the classroom to know. So that's an example of what I asked to talk about and was said, no, that's not school committee.
Um, Dr. Provost, did you, you had your hand up? I don't know if you want to add information.
I just wanted to comment on the two examples that Member Voss just gave. And add that, and we do notify parents when there's COVID in school. So if a parent wanted to have their child tested, they certainly would have all the information they need in order to do that. The reason it's not at the classroom level, based on the advice of our health department, is the same reason why information isn't given on a street level, um, because it gets down to a very small universe of individuals. And from a public health perspective, their advice is that that's going to lead to COVID shaming and all many other issues. People trying to cover up their, their positive status and things that they think will impact the ability to mitigate the disease. Now, you know, the school committee could second guess that and say, you know, we're going to go to war with the health department on this issue. But I really give them great deference on this because this is their area of expertise. This is, you know, the area of public policy that they're specifically hired to implement. And so I, I tend to, to find that they speak with a lot of credibility on that issue.
This is regarding essentially about contact tracing and that they, they will, as you said in your letter that went home to parents, that folks who, uh, you will be contacted for contact tracing. But obviously the entire school was notified that there was COVID in the school community. Um, it was just that there is not, um, you know, it, it's a, the contact tracing is done based on who is a close, identified as close contacts. So I, and, and so the, the, the request was that there be a blanket policy that if there's a child in any class, that the entire class be notified, um, irrespective of contact tracing. And so that was the, I guess that's the question is whether we, um, will override the contact tracing policy of the health department.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct you, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Since I made the request.
Wouldn't be the first time, but that's okay. I'm fine.
I, I believe a constituent pointed this out to me and I checked it. Um, the, the six-foot rule says if you're tightly masked and not within six feet for more than 15 minutes, you're not considered a close contact and you're not part of the contact tracing. And for students who are sitting, taking mask breaks and eating lunch without masks on, it makes the entire class potentially close contacts. And so I don't know if we have ways of separating those things out, but it gets messy pretty quickly. And that's the CDC guidelines that our policy says that we are, um, following.
Dr. Provost?
I would just say it is messy. Um, that's why every case is different. That's why every contact tracing experience is its own, um, follows its own path. What I can tell you with respect to that is the health department has asked us to implement protocols to assist with contact tracing, specifically around lunches. Um, so in the elementary schools, students have an assigned seat for lunch. They're going to be eating inside. If they're, they're in secondary schools, students have more choices where they, they're going to sit. But we ask them to either sign up at a table or for those who have, um, older students to scan a QR code that associates them with a table so that when contact tracing starts, that information is available. Again, you know, that was based on the advice of the health department. In, you know, saying that if we have to contact trace, lunch is going to be a potential weak spot for us. And so we need a protocol in place. Can you please, um, give us accountability for students at lunches, which we've done, you know, to the, the very specifics of how each contact is traced. I can't speak to that because I'm not a trained contact tracer. But I do know that, um, we have trained contact tracers on our staff. We have them, contact tracers we've hired for the, this district and they follow a specific protocol. So again, that's why, you know, these discussions on Wednesdays are really important for me.
Uh, and, and I, I'm just going to repeat, and you kind of said this. Our way of doing things in the classroom and the cafeteria would say that, that according to CDC guidelines, you should have let the entire class know that there's been an exposure. They have met that requirement of an exposure.
Member Kaufman?
Thank you. So I think this conversation, um, reinforces why I brought this up. But we can have these types of discussions at each of our school committee meetings. We can't talk about CDC and the Board of Health and what one person read and a different person read. We need to, as Member Voss and I agree, we need to make a solid decision on who makes decisions and how communication is shared. So it sounds like there's a couple of policies that Mayor Narkwitz brought up that I honestly forgot about. Um, if he, what he says is accurate and Member Fallon, who is, um, obviously up on policy and believes that we're not, um, what's the word? We're not, it's what Member Levy brought up before, what, what, in terms of who's, can we break our role of setting policy? Sounds like Member Fallon believes we can in this case. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to get back to my proposal and see if there's, um, support for it, which is that we allow the Northampton Health Committee, Health Advisory Committee to make health-related advice or decisions pertaining to students and staff as it relates to COVID-related matters, such as mask-wearing, social distancing, et cetera. I guess that are not change of working conditions. And, and we use that as a judgment for moving forward. And I think we need to decide whether we want to take on more of a role or less of a role. And there's no doubt there'll be some differences, but we need to, we need to hammer this out and be clear on it so that we know, we don't go through this every meeting and in between meetings. And the public knows who they need to contact if they want to share their concerns. So can I have that vote put out and see if anyone's interested?
So, so you're, you're, so that, so you would, uh, renewing your initial motion.
Yeah.
So is there a second? And so this would basically be essentially affirming the process as it's been operating right now, uh, today?
I think so. And just clarifying, yeah, clarifying, when it comes to changing the working conditions, that's the exception that the school committee needs to get involved with. And that's where we're voting on vaccinations, where we had it on the agenda. Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Member Voss, your hand is up.
Well, I don't think, Member Kaufman, what you said is necessarily what you meant. What I think I heard is happening is that this group that I used to be a part of under a different name, which I don't think wants to own this, but maybe it's changed, is making recommendations to Dr. Provost. And then he is in charge of making the final decision. That's how it seems to me that it's operating. And that's not what your motion said, but maybe if, I don't know if you want to make that your motion, but that's my understanding of this conversation is that is how we're moving ahead. And in terms of our policy, Member Fallon pointed out that that's consistent because we gave him, um, a, as, as we probably need to, right? Because things change so fast, permission to change things. So if that's the motion, um, that makes it more clear to me what we're voting on. I will say the part of what you said, which I don't think is part of your motion that I disagree with, is we still have a mask policy. We still have other policies and we, I, I don't want to give up control of those. We should have policies about these things. It's just if things get worse, he has the ability to change, um, the policy very quickly. I, that's my understanding of, after this discussion of how we're operating. Um, but I don't think that was your motion.
Yeah, I probably stumbled over it, but, um, I, I think, um, is that, I think that's accurate. So, um,
I think that describes the current, the current decision-making, uh, framework. So I think that if that, that, I think that is accurate.
I think that's accurate. I just want to say, if that's the case, then I don't think we discuss item O or whatever you have on the agenda tonight, Member Voss, because I think those are all related to, uh, day-to-day things that this superintendent would get. So I think, and I probably, let me just finish. I think you and I probably disagree on that because you're, at least the recommendations that you wanted to bring up had to do with students staying masked while eating, about being six feet apart. And I think about vaccinating students in the playground was, it's hard to keep up. But I think those are the types of things that would rest with the health advisory committee and not the school committee. So if we're agreeing, then you agree. If not, I think you would disagree, which I think you do.
I, um, I was told to make amendments to, it's S actually, and I think we should talk about S and O together. They're very much linked. And I worked hard with our attorney to work on S and it is absolutely, I think my prerogative to suggest a change to a policy. That's one of the things school committee members can do. And that's what Dr. Provost directed me to do on this particular issue. So I think that's important to do. And I will, I will point out, while people are deciding how they want to vote on this, um, this, this system didn't work so well this week because I already pointed out how we're not following CDC guidance on who we let know in the classroom, um, of exposures. The other thing is we have a mandate in the city of Northampton that says if you can't maintain six feet of social distance outside, you should be wearing a mask. And so I asked, are we wearing masks at recess or do we have a way to make sure kids are staying six feet apart? I live right by an elementary school and kids play pretty close to each other. And, um, so to me, with how much COVID is in our community and how contagious it is right now, and how much I want our kids to stay in school and to not have a lot of cases, it makes a heck of a lot of sense. And this was a week ago. It makes a heck of a lot of sense to follow the Northampton mandate. If you're not six feet apart, put a mask on. And the response I got back was that applies to the public. It doesn't apply to our schools. And I, I don't know where to go with that because to me that's really bad judgment. So I don't want to be a part of making that decision that puts our kids at risk.
Right. I think you and I are absolute same page. We obviously both want to keep our students. It's just that I feel entirely comfortable with the process that's currently in place. And I think that, um, I'm happy to continue doing that. I think that's the best vote moving forward. And I, I don't know where the rest of the committee sits with it, but, um, I think everybody in that group, I'm incredibly impressed with. I think their data on what we've been able to accomplish so far is unprecedented. And I'm feeling like they're in much better position than I am to be part of this decision-making process. But clearly we all want our kids to be safe. I'm just, I guess I'm suggesting we keep as is.
Okay, um, Member Gold.
Um, what I appreciate about this is I think as it's moving forward, it seems like it would give the agenda-setting committee leverage or what have you to say what can or can't go on the, what should or shouldn't go on our, any future agendas. Like we know who's, who is responsible for making those decisions. So I think this is an important vote to, to make. It sounds like what it is, is just as Mayor. It sounds like what it is, is just as Mayor, you can't forget. Oh, I don't remember how you said it, but it's just continuing what we're actually doing already and affirming that. Um, so I hope that we do vote in in support of continuing what the process we have. Um, as Member Voss was talking, I just uh I needed to hear um another question. Dr. Provost, is it accurate to say that we are not following, we, this last week, we did not follow CDC guidelines? Like, is that, she just said that last week in our schools, we didn't, and I just want to make, see if that's accurate or not.
Not what I said.
No, you actually, that's exactly.
I'll clarify. I said we didn't follow the mask mandate outside and that our policy, as I understand it from an email with Dr. Provost, for who we allow, how we define close contacts, does not follow CDC policy. That's what I said. I don't know if we actually used that policy this week.
So I I would, I would say that I can't confirm the statement that we're not following CDC guidance. I I'm not as, you know, I am not a contact tracer. What I can tell you is that I think that our contact tracers follow a very conservative definition of close contact that I think is in line with the Department of Public Health, which is where they are. All our discussions on a weekly basis are based on local data, regional data, and new information from the Department of Health, because that's the agency that they liaison with most. Um, so that, that's what I'll say about that. With respect to the um, the mask mandate for the city, that mandate um applied to public gatherings. A school is not a public gathering. In fact, we have a number of rules that prevent the public from accessing the schools, which is why um the mask mandate was not in in application for the schools. However, I will say, just to talk about this process that happens on Wednesdays. Yesterday, we had a discussion about, you know, the problems we've had this week, the um the increase of the Delta variant in our area, and made a decision that we will be um implementing masking during recess. The letter to notify the community about that is already written. It's going, it's being translated tomorrow. It's going out tomorrow. So that's just um an example of how um of how the how the committee works. Originally, we thought that it wasn't going to be needed for students. Um, that it's and it's absolutely true that that policy was not meant to apply to recess. But it's also true that the experience we've had over the past week has been that we're not having good compliance with students' social distancing during recess, which is why we're making the decision to change the masking policy.
Member Voss? Oh, um, hand down. Um, okay, so there is a motion that's been made and seconded. Um, and it is a motion to effectively sort of clarify and affirm what the current process is for um decision-making, uh day-to-day decision-making on health um related issues related to COVID. So um, Member Voss?
All right, I I I realize this is my chance to say this. There's been a lot of um references to another agenda item I asked for, and I want to clarify um the concern. In the South, there's a lot of schools that have decided to eat outside because probably the weakest link in our school in terms of spreading COVID is lunch and snack and breakfast. And um what's really striking is our schools are doing this very differently. A parent forwarded me a lovely plan at Jackson Street School. They've really thought this through. Um, another parent is concerned that K through second grade at another school can't go outside for any meals. And we've spent all summer talking about equity issues and how we want to make certain things at all the elementary schools similar across them, yet we have completely different policies at our schools. And I just am putting this out there because I I do think eating, and that's where the comment was about putting your mask on when you're talking. A lot of experts have said the best thing you can do is not talk because you expel a lot more aerosols when you're talking. So i- it seems like a really simple thing to say, kids, we have to eat inside today. We're gonna watch a movie or we're not gonna talk while we're eating, or excuse me, while the mask is off. Um, and I just, in absence of people making these kinds of proposals, um, I don't understand how I don't understand why we're not doing everything we can to keep this thing from spreading inside. So that's, that's another example of where we're not looking out in the world, seeing what's happening and seeing how people are solving it. And we're doing it very differently in all of our schools, and people should just be aware of that.
Okay, so um is there any further discussion on this particular motion uh made by the Vice Chair? Okay.
Can I just clarify then?
Sure.
So I I think I clarified it okay based on the feedback I just got. So we're allowing the Northampton Health Advisory Committee to continue making advice to Dr. Provost pertaining to the health of our students and staff as it relates to the many COVID-related matters not associated with changes to working conditions. Does that sound okay?
That that is consistent with your prior uh presentation of the motion, yes.
Member Voss, is that, is that better now? You might not agree with that, but is that better now?
It's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So um, okay, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll on that motion.
Member Goldman?
I don't understand.
Member Voss?
No.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narckowitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
No.
Did you say no?
I did. I'm sorry. No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Levy?
No.
And Member Kaufman?
Yes, yes.
The vote in a minute is four, five in favor, one abstention, and three noes.
Okay, so the um, so the motion carries to affirm our current um, our current decision-making structure. Um, so the next item on the agenda is an update uh to the Code of Conduct uh to include um policy EBCFA. Dr. Provost, could you explain this?
Yes, this is the um aforementioned face covering policy. It has been um adopted by the School Committee and has been enforced since last spring. However, um, the Attorney for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents pointed out that it may not have any enforceability on students unless it's also included in the Code of Conduct. So um, the proposal is just to include the policy as written in the Code of Conduct um so that it would be enforceable. Since it's already on the agenda for potential modification, um, maybe it a motion saying, you know, well, it's not, it actually doesn't need a vote, since this is just um for the the school committee's review and consent that um during the time of COVID, we will have the current face covering policy included in our Code of Conduct. Um, so it would be just an opportunity for any school committee members to speak out if they think that's um, if that is in contradiction to any of their current existing policies.
Okay, so then the the essentially the motion would be to just um uh would be to include this policy in the Code of Conduct?
It actually doesn't even need a uh motion. It uh, you know, without opposition, it would be incorporated into the Code of Conduct.
Okay. Is there any concerns about that, about us making that update? Okay, um, okay, so that uh sounds like that is um acceptable to do. Um, so the next item on the agenda is an update on the retreat. Member Kaufman?
Thank you. Um, so let's see. I'll try and review this fairly quickly. I received a response from all committee members on rescheduling our retreat. Um, so there's a, there's a couple of things happening there. First of all, it looked like October 5th would be the best date, although that was not great for everyone. Um, but clearly, four of our colleagues um said they would strongly prefer waiting until the next school committee begins to have this retreat, as now only three of 10 of us will be returning in January. Um, and I I could add myself to that list now, so I would say five of 10 of us. It wasn't one of my specific options, but people were clear on that. So I in turn shared this information with Sapphire from CES. She was um scheduled, is scheduled to do the retreat. She agreed and thought that doing this with the incoming committee would make a lot of sense. So given this situation, along with the latest concerns around in-person meetings, which was a requirement for this retreat, I would like to propose that the committee vote to put this off until new members are seated and they can decide if they want um, if this is what they want to do.
Okay, um, so do you want to, I mean, I, do you want uh an actual motion? Or do you want, how would you like to, or you could make a motion as well, um?
But Mayor, it doesn't say on the agenda that we will be voting. It's just listed as an update.
Is is, that is correct. It is an update. So um, and I do believe that, I mean, I think you were empowered to try to schedule this and to try to work with committee members to schedule it. And essentially, it sounds like you're saying you were um, do not believe it would be in the best interest to try to schedule it or not, there's not going to be enough participation to do it during the current term, and it makes sense to have it roll over to the next term. So I don't even know if a vote would be required for that.
I I guess I would just look for anybody to strongly object or give a, give an alternative to that because at this point, five of 10 of us have specifically expressed putting it off, and I'm not sure how the other five feel. Um, and um, I also don't know if we went with the fifth, which was one of the five dates that I put out there that CES could do it. There were actually at least two maybes, um, people that were not sure they can do it. Um, I don't remember the specific reasons, but there were serious um timing issues, so.
Okay, Member Levy, you have your hand up?
I do, but then I saw Member Goldman put her hand up, and I believe she's gonna say what I was gonna say because we had talked about this and it was really her idea, so I'm gonna let her say it.
Member Goldman?
I don't remember what I was gonna say, but
I could say it.
So, yeah, could you say it? I was gonna say something, maybe the same thing. Go ahead.
Okay, so Member Goldman made a, what I thought, uh, wise suggestion. I I was one of those people who thought we should wait until we have the new school committee. Uh, Member Goldman's idea was perhaps we schedule it for December um so that members of the new school committee could participate, members of this school committee could participate if they so chose. And then we wouldn't have to wait while the new school committee goes through the process of trying to schedule, and then it's months and months down the road again. So just an idea to put out there. That was really Member Goldman's idea.
Okay, um, certainly not without precedent because we did something similar the December of the beginning of your term, or or, you know, after your elections, we did uh Tracy Novick and um her colleague from MASC came and did did a presentation uh that included incoming and outgoing school committee members. So that certainly would be another way to make sure that this doesn't get delayed. So that certainly, you'll certainly know after November 2nd who all the new school committee members are, so that would be easy to do. So, yeah. Um, so is that a possibility with CES uh, Member Kaufman, that it could happen this year?
I I didn't ask them, but I certainly would be happy to. I like the idea. Uh, would be, I mean, the giving them the most expansive amount of time. So are we talking about like mid-November till the end of December? I don't know whose idea it was, Kai's or um, Member Goldman's or Member Levy's, but doesn't matter.
I would, I mean, I would say between November 10th and December 10th.
Okay.
And not the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Um, and also, I just wonder, uh, Number Kaufman, if you're comfortable continuing to carry the torch for this? Or if um you've had any thoughts about uh who would hold this piece that to schedule, do the outreach and uh to uh bring it forward to the committee going forward?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what your question is.
Uh, my question is, will you continue to champion this training uh being the lead for this training for the committee and until it's complete?
Uh, I guess so, assuming it's gonna happen in November, not when I'm not on the committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a a plan for going forward, and um, thank you for that update. Uh, thank you for that update, Member Kaufman, and thank you for your, for your um ideas, um, Member Goldman and Member Levy. So the next item on our agenda is a um motion. Uh, this is a vote to implement a COVID-19 vaccination requirement for all NPS staff effective um October 22nd with appropriate medical and religious exemptions. Um, and I would turn to Member Seraphie Cox, who's listed on this particular item.
Thank you. Um, I uh, I mean, I heard members of the public speak in favor of this. Uh, of course, we have uh seen tonight from um our president um strengthening uh vaccine mandates across the country. And um, so I, I mean, I had asked to put this on the agenda uh before uh uh tonight's agenda. I'm sorry, tonight's announcements, but I feel like that reinforces the importance um of uh of making sure that we keep all of our staff, students, and community members safe. Um, and I know that there have been some questions about what does religious and um and medical exemptions mean? So um, you know, if those are questions that committee members have, uh, I I think that uh Sabrina Provost is probably prepared to answer them. Um, but I would like to make a motion uh to, I don't have the, you said it, uh, Mayor Narckowitz. Um, I don't have the agenda in front of me with the, here it is. Okay, I can read it. Uh, well, I'll I'll make the motion to implement a COVID-19 vaccine vaccination requirement for all NPS staff effective October 22nd with appropriate medical and religious exemptions.
Second.
And then the only thing that I will add is uh that um there have also been questions about, well, what about students? And the answer uh that we understand from our legal counsel is that um at this time, uh, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is in charge of that decision for uh for students so that we as a school committee do not have the purview to require our students to be vaccinated.
Okay, so um, there's been a motion made. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all right. Member Voss?
Thank you. So um, I too asked for this to be on the agenda, so thank you very much for moving this along with such great wording. And I too asked if we could um have a policy for vaccinating eligible students and got the same answer that Member Seraphie Cox got. Indeed, the Department of Public Health needs to do that. However, um, it's been very interesting in the state of Massachusetts this week, several districts have passed um requirements for vaccination for students participating in extracurricular activities. So I would like to propose a friendly amendment to this um to this motion along the lines of exactly what Lexington, Massachusetts did, and I will share it. It's written right here. If I can find it. Here we go. Um, and if we don't do this tonight, maybe the Health Committee will consider it. Again, the goal is to keep COVID out of our schools. So what other districts seem to be passing and seems to be allowed is that eligibility for participation in extracurricular activities, including sports. Um, I won't redo the next paragraph, but basically say, all eligible students under one, students who participate in school-sponsored sports and or rostered extracurriculars that occur outside of the school day are required to be vaccinated, except in those exceptional circumstances where weekly COVID-19 testing will be allowed. B, students who are awaiting vaccination are required to participate in state-sponsored testing through Lexington Public Schools or submit evidence of a negative COVID-19 test on a weekly basis. And then there's a par for age in or submit evidence of a negative COVID-19 test on a weekly basis. And then there's a par for age ineligible students. And again, I won't, um, read it. It says they have to get, well, summarize it, they have to get vaccinated as soon as possible, and they have to test. And so this is the way that other districts in Massachusetts are dealing with, um, the desire to, to encourage students to be vaccinated.
So, um, I, I guess my, my one, uh, I, I know that the, know that our legal counsel has raised some concerns about, about that, and, um, and I guess it's still a question. Because other districts have implemented them, um, doesn't necessarily mean that they're lawful, but I guess my, my bigger concern for tonight is really an open meeting law issue that, you know, we, uh, this is a, this is a fairly substantial policy that is not noticed on the agenda. And, you know, we are talking about a vaccination mandate for staff, which are, you know, adults that are employees of the district. And so I think that, um, it would be, this would, this would, um, sort of stretch, uh, the, the bounds of what a friendly amendment to something that's already on the agenda, that's really far beyond what's, what the agenda item is. So I guess I would prefer that, um, you've raised this and you've sent us this language, and I know our legal counsel has it, that we do have the health advisory look at it, but we also explore it further and, um, and potentially bring it back to a future meeting. That would be my, um, my sense of it, in terms of whether it's a allowable friendly amendment um, to what's been clearly posted on the agenda.
I, I would welcome the chance to discuss it further at the next meeting.
Okay. So then you'd be withdrawing the friendly amendment?
Well, I'll let member Levy make a comment, but yes.
Okay, sure.
I guess I'll just share a frustration that I specifically asked that we put on the agenda, not just conversation about, about vaccinating staff, but also vaccinating students. And I was told we can't do that because of, because that's under the purview of the Department of Public Health. And now we know that there are actually ways that we can have that conversation. And so I just want to voice a frustration that I know I'm not the only one who asked for this to be on the agenda, and, um, knowing now that I guess pushing this off means there's another month before we're able to better protect our students.
Again, when, with it, when this item was being discussed, uh, there was a clear, you know, call with the Commissioner about what was allowable and what was not allowed, and it was pretty, made pretty clear that DPH sets the standards for vaccination of students in Massachusetts. They're the ones who set the vaccination standard. So this might be an interesting workaround. I'm not sure how equitable it is that only students who play sports, um, would be mandated. I'm, I'm sure there's lots of different issues around that as well. And, and also whether in fact it is an end around the, the, um, DPH's authority on this. Again, Lexington, can certainly afford good lawyers to defend it, and, um, so they, uh, that, that's certainly their purview. But I, I don't believe Lexington is, um, I think they're the exception. They're not, um, what's commonly happening in and around our this area at least. So, that's, I guess that's all I can tell you, member Levy. That was the information we had. It's what our legal counsel advised, and our legal counsel has even looked at the Lexington policy and has raised some concerns about it. So that's the best I can tell you. So I don't think it's a clear-cut, um, uh, issue in terms of that we think we do have the authority to basically do something that DPH has, has said is their authority. So that's the, I guess that's the conundrum here.
I hear you, just voicing my frustration at the lack of opportunity to discuss it today.
Yep. We certainly are discussing it, that there's, we definitely are discussing it, that's for sure. Um, okay, so the, the agenda item then that we're voting on is the motion, um, item Q, which is the implementation of the vaccination requirement for staff, and obviously, um, uh, it's to implement, so it would also require any real, required, um, collective bargaining related to it. So is there further discussion on that motion that we're in debate on? Okay, hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narquitz.
Yes.
Member Bisantki.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
And member Goldman.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor.
Okay, so that motion is adopted, um, and so now we have an item, uh, uh, R, which is a, um, MOA, um, enabling, uh, I'll, I'll just describe it as an MOA related to high school faculty um, and, um, and department chair meetings to be held before the, start of the school day. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Provost. I believe this may be ready for a vote tonight. I'm not sure.
Actually gonna say, that's one that I will ask to move until next month. We've been working on some concepts, and I thought we'd have something ready to go. But work continues on this item.
Okay, so we will then carry this over to a future meeting. Um, so now we come to item S, which is a discussion and possible vote on, uh, policy EBCFA, uh, face covering amendments. Um, and so, uh, member Voss, you have, this is an item that was listed for you.
Yep, I can take it. Thanks. So I, I, um, Dr. Provost, um, asked me to try to put some of the things I was asking him about into the policy, and when I reread the policy, some of them fit, some of them did not. But, um, we, the policy, not surprisingly, is quite out of date because COVID has changed so much, so that's no one's fault. But, um, I worked with Leila, a little, or our attorney, to, um, to add some language, and I can share it. And there's some other things that, um, there, there's some changes that we may need to vote on separately, um, but here we go. So, oops, share screen. Sorry, where is it? Okay, here we go. Okay, so, um, a lot of other districts call it face masks, not face coverings, and that's mine, or I don't really care. But I added face masks to it to make it clear what it was. What's in black here is the policy that we already had. Um, and really, I worked on, I read a lot on the CDC site to bring this policy into compliance with what they're recommending, and they're not even always consistent. But it, you know, right here, it says therefore important, in accordance with guidance from the CDC, DESI, and the DPH, the following requirements are in place until further notice. And, except, so these are Leila's comments here, um, you know, she added, uh, except as specifically provided for below, a mask slash face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, during school-sponsored events, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. And I apologize, um, this was, she edited this, and I don't know, um, if what used to be there is no longer there. Below, where I edited, I, I just, um, put a line for it. And then this is really the same as what we had when you, the people who are policy, yeah.
I'm sorry, so are you saying that the blue that we're, like, everything that's regular font was or, is already the policy, but the blue?
The black, the black is already regular policy, and the blue here is all Leila, right here, I think. Or she's gone over it.
So it's, which is, are the, the changes you were asked, you were looking for that she approved or commented?
I haven't, I haven't really gotten to anything substantial yet, but yes.
Member Voss, uh, member Fallon has her hand up. Member Fallon?
Sure.
Could I just, I'm sorry, maybe I should have waited till the end, but could I ask, I'm so confused about, and this is, of course, a policy I brought forward initially, about when we are talking about the on-school grounds and the interaction with the guidelines for athletic events, because I feel like our standards were different right now for sporting events, or they're not. It's not clear to me whether we're requiring masks for sports beyond this, those students who are on the bench currently, and if that's what you're asking that we do. Like, could you just talk about what you're suggesting and how it relates to sports and whether we're following school guidelines, CDC guidelines, DESI guidelines, MIA guidelines? Like, I'm gonna, I'm trying to get a lot.
Sure, I am, I'm not there yet. I just pulled the other one up. It also said school grounds. I haven't actually proposed any changes to these. I don't know. I, it's not clear to me what our policy is on that either. Um, I think maybe let me keep going, um. Okay, and so
Dr. Provost has his hand up, man.
Dr. Provost, did you have something to?
I, I can wait to be recognized. Whenever you're ready, I can explain the, the practice for sports.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the, the, the requirement, and this is by the Board of Health Local Order, is that masking is required on sidelines in any games played in Northampton. It's not required during actual gameplay, but any, any athletes that are on the sideline, sitting close to each other, need to mask.
But would this policy change that? Because it's saying even when social distancing is observed on school grounds.
But it says except as specifically provided for below, so, um, the old policy, the old policy said a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. That's our current policy, so this is not new.
Right, and that's why I'm asking. I don't think we're following our own policy necessarily, I think is my point.
I think we are, because down below, an exception is when you're outside. But I haven't gotten there yet. It, it used to be at least. So, this is where, this is the old policy, right? So it says except for when below, so it, you, and I've, I've put a line through this suggesting I'd like to do away with it in the age of Delta. It says additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced during mask breaks, while eating or drinking, and while outside. So this is where I tried to put what I think are best practices right now, and if it doesn't belong in the policy, maybe this Health and Safety Committee can keep the, take this up. But I renamed it Guidelines for Removal of Masks. And again, this is many months later. Things have changed. Um, and in fact, I think Dr. Provost said he was okay with this first bullet when I went back and forth. Mask breaks will be taken outside with appropriate social distancing based on current CDC guidelines. In rare cases where an outside mask break is not possible, mask breaks will be in well-ventilated socially-distanced spaces, and there will be no talking while masks are off. Eating and drinking, we, the old policy said just rip your mask off and go to town eating and drinking. Now, this is proposing it to say, to the greatest extent possible, the district will encourage and facilitate outdoor eating and drinking. When that is not possible, students will only remove their masks while eating or drinking, and they will be instructed to not talk with the mask removed. Indoor eating and drinking will happen in well-ventilated spaces with as much social distancing as possible. And finally, recess. If it is possible to enforce social distancing during recess, masks may be optional. However, if students are within six feet of each other while playing, even for short times, masks must be worn. And we can come back to, let me just finish the changes. There were some real weaknesses in our old policy, and we actually, I don't remember, but a few speakers at the beginning um, spoke about this, types of masks, and this is where I spent quite a bit of time on the um, CDC website, and this is where it currently landed. Types of masks, all students in grades pre-K through 12 will be required to wear a mask slash face covering, which is to be provided by a student's family. And everything in black here, by the way, is our old policy. Staff members are responsible for providing their own face coverings. However, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at a building, school-sponsored event, or board school transportation without one. Types of masks that are acceptable to wear at school include either disposable or cloth masks that fit properly, meaning snugly around the nose and chin with no large gaps around the sides of the face. It is highly recommended that masks have a nose wire to prevent air from leaking out of the top of the mask. And by the way, most of that wording is from CDC. Uh, I think all of it is. Um, bullet, disposable masks, the definition, medical procedure mask, also referred to as surgical or disposable face mask, should have two or three layers and be made of tightly woven fabric. Again, taken straight from CDC, as is the cloth masks, bullet, taken straight from CDC. Cloth masks should have two to three layers of tightly woven fabrics, such as cotton, and be breathable. And then down here, the in black is what, um, our old policy said. So in order to address the new knowledge of what we know with Delta, that's what I am proposing for our face mask policy.
Okay, um, so, uh, Dr. Provost.
Do you want me to take it down or leave it up?
Dr. Provost, do you want to comment on something specifically on the screen, or?
I don't need the screen, but others might, so I'm not going to weigh in on that. I would just say that, um, to be consistent with the language used by the Health Advisory Committee, uh, and we had a long discussion about this on Wednesday. I would recommend changing social distancing to physical distancing, um, for, for obvious reasons. The, the language makes a difference. Not, not substantively in how the, the policy would be carried out, but in the message we're sending to the community.
Sure. Agreed.
Member Kaufman.
Thank you. Um, so Dr. Provost, did you have a chance to talk to the Health Advisory Committee about member Voss's ideas, and if so, what was their response? We did not review this, um, proposed policy change, uh, in its entirety. I would, I would point out, there are several members of the committee on the, the meeting tonight. And, uh, the only thing that, that stands out to me from our conversations is that um, comment I already made about the use of physical distancing instead of social distancing. Okay, thank you.
Member Fallon.
Thank you. I appreciate the time that went into this, and that, uh, attorney's already looked over it, but I, I did not get this document in advance. Is, this is literally the first time I've laid eyes on this, was when it went up on the screen. And, am I the only one? I mean, or was this not?
Because it just, because as I was trying to add items to the agenda, I was told I had to write it in form of a policy, and it got written between yesterday and today, so it.
Okay, so just to point out, like, in the handbook, you just asked me to add in language, saying documents will be sent out, emailed out to members the Friday before a meeting. Reason, I'm just saying, like, I appreciate this, and, and I'm certainly willing to consider it, but I'm in no way ready to vote on something that I'm seeing for the first time right now.
I so appreciate that, and I want to say, I feel like I'm in an impossible situation, because I wanted to figure out how to get masks on kids at recess, and to keep lunch as safe as possible, and I the agenda-setting team knows we went back and forth starting last week, or like, a week ago, Monday or Tuesday. This has been going on for a long time, and eventually I was told this had to be amendments to this policy. And so I didn't have the ability, I didn't even know that this is where it was headed until very recently. So I, I appreciate that. We're in COVID, we need to make decisions. I would be fine with this policy not going into place, and us, us having Dr. Provost, um, you know, I know he's gonna make some decisions, and we can talk about the policy at the next meeting. That's fine with me. I don't really care when the policy gets approved. I care that these things happen as soon as possible. And I, you know, somebody in the, in the comments that, at the beginning of the meeting mentioned single-layer masks, you know, that's terrible if kids are coming to school on a single-layer mask. So a lot of this I just learned about as I went through the policy on Wednesday. Um, but we, we need to be adaptive during COVID and in normal things. I agree with you, member Fallon, but I, I don't know how else to do this.
Member Goldman.
Thank you. Um, this question is for member Voss and also member Fallon. I wonder how the two, how each of you, um, would receive the idea of referring uh, updating this policy to the Rules and Policies Subcommittee? Um, would receive the idea of referring, uh, updating this policy to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Honestly, I think that slows it down even more, that, that we don't even have a date set, and so for it to be. Voted on tonight to refer back to Rules and Policy, to have it taken up in Rules and Policy, and then brought back to the full, full committee. Seems like a lot of extra steps to me, particularly since Member Voss is the one who seems to be the most, um. Invested in these particular changes, that I worry that we would take up the matter and bring it back, and she would object. And it would have been a waste of the Subcommittee's time, so, you know, I think that, I think that either we can. Put it on the agenda for next month, or like we said, we have the policy that allows. Doctor Provost to make these modifications, and I know he intends on making some modifications.
I certainly wasn't suggesting that Member Voss would no longer be a part of, uh, a part of it. I just want to be clear about that, I'm not trying to take the policy, uh, the. Advocacy of the policy away from Member Voss.
I, um, I'm happy to go with however the committee wants to, like I said, I just care that these things happen, and. Um, we do currently have a policy that is so out of date that it's recommending masks that don't make sense, so, I, I, I mean. I don't know, does Doctor Provost, can he just rewrite the policy, I don't even know what it looks like, I know he has the power to. To change our policy, I don't know what that looks like, whatever we can do to move this ahead is fine with me.
Doctor Provost.
I certainly don't have the power to write policy, um, what I would suggest is that, as I said, I'm gonna make. Some changes tomorrow that are already in line with this policy. Um, I don't know why single-layer masks would be in use, that's not consistent with our current policy, our current policy says at least two layers. Um, so I think that would be in violation even of what we currently have, uh, but my suggestion would be to, you know, to let me make the changes that I've. Already discussed with the committee tomorrow, and if, if this, if the committee as a whole feels that it's not ready to, um, discuss these amendments at this time. Then we just bring them back to the next meeting, rather than sending it back to Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
That, that works for me, I am gonna read to you from the old policy, I have it up, it says, fabric masks, this is under acceptable. Preferably at least two layers, but it doesn't say they can't be single-layered.
Okay, so, um, so then, uh, I guess we'll. Um, sounds like the, 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 um. The approach is then to sort of treat this as a reading of these, of these, um, chip, uh, um, proposed amendments to the policy. But then to actually bring them back for an actual vote at the next meeting, with Doctor Provost in the meantime, um, planning to implement many of them.
Mayor, can we, can we just ask Doctor Provost to have, to bring this to the Health Advisory Committee, or for their feedback also before the next meeting?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Just need a copy of it.
I think I emailed it to you this morning, but I can send it again.
Thank you.
Member Levy.
Uh, I'm also interested in the feedback from the, the Health and Safety Committee, I also. Though will articulate that I don't share Member Fallon's perspective, I'm fine, having seen this for the first time right now. Voting on this, so, if the entire committee feels differently, then let's wait, but if other folks are in support of. Uh, voting on this, I, I would propose that we continue to vote on this, I, I guess I'm a little confused, it sounds like. The superintendent's gonna make these changes anyway, if that's the case, why not just vote these into the, the change of the policy? If that's what the, the committee is looking for, so I haven't, I haven't gotten a sense, other than from Member Fallon. What folks are feeling about their readiness to vote on this.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you, Member Levy, um, other, other folks, Member Busansky.
I guess, um, it'd be helpful, Superintendent, to understand which of these changes you're making tomorrow. And if there are any that you're not, so that's what I'm a little unclear on, is this? Um, yeah, if you could clarify.
Uh, it would be helpful if Member Voss would put the document back on the screen, so I can go through it point by point.
Thank you.
So the first page really doesn't have any changes. Um, moving on to the second page, I think the bulk of it is in this, what appears to me is purple print. So. And I think the, the big change is the third bullet point. Which is masking during recess, uh, you know, the feedback that we've gotten from staff is that it's really not. Been effective to try to enforce social distancing at recess, it's, it's much, it's been much more effective with students to try to. Um, enforce face masking at recess, so that would be implemented as of tomorrow. Um, the eating and drinking, I think you've all been, um, copied on in email that I sent to the principals, basically asking them. Um, to work on trying to facilitate eating and drinking outside to the greatest extent possible. Um, so I think that has already been done, I don't think that's really a change that, you know, would be announced. But it's a change that we're working on internally, do, do you disagree?
Um, well, alls I want to say is, I, I agree, and I, I'm really appreciative of that, and I think now our policy reflects that, whereas the old policy says. It's okay to just eat and drink inside, so I think i- in a way, this policy is supporting that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm answering, Member Bizzant. Question about what's gonna be different, or of anything than what we're announcing tomorrow, and then, um, masks outside. Taken within, uh, appropriate social distancing, I guess there might be one change with that, one of the things we talked about yesterday. Um, as an advisory committee, is really trying to encourage outdoor use of space. Which would in, give students a, another opportunity for mask breaks that they'd be losing because of recess, and we talked about. Um, allowing teachers to conduct classes outside, um, with mask breaks if they can maintain social distancing. So, I think that you might get some feedback around no talking at all when masks are, are off, I think that. I, I think we'd like to have the opportunity for, for.
Sorry, sorry, that's only inside.
Okay.
That's only inside.
Then maybe, maybe just inserting the word inside, so that that's clear. But, so yeah, uh, to answer your question, um. Already, is already, things that we're already doing, and so that's why, uh, Member Voss is correct in saying that I was supportive of the proposed changes. Also, um, thank you for pointing out that, you know, potential way of looking at our, our masking policy. Currently, I looked at, you know, I've always been interpreting it. That it should be two or three layers under the current language, but I can see that you could read it to say that one layer is okay. Um, so I was actually just starting to work on a, another paragraph to the letter, um. Ab- about masking, because we have, in our other communications, we have been emphasizing two-layer masks or, or surgical masks. So, I would say that, you know, all of this is going to be, you know, as of the end of the day tomorrow, consistent with our practices.
Got it, thank you, uh, in that case, I feel comfortable voting on this policy tonight, just for the record.
Okay, um, thank you, Member Busansky, Member Gold.
Um, on the issue of, on the issue of being comfortable voting on it tonight, I would say that I'm not as, I would want Doctor Provost to have. More than just this pursuit to look at it and confirm with the Health Advisory Committee, so I wouldn't be comfortable with that. And Doctor Provost, I do have a question, um, the idea, just to clarify, is there something that we should be aware of that, was there? Um, was there contact, con- contact tracing that, from kids being unmasked at recess? That has led to COVID spread, that you're now requiring masks to be on, I mean, there's one thing, if it's difficult to tell kids to keep their mask on, there's another thing to say. You know, or to keep their distance, but if there's not spread, I just, I wonder if, you know, if it's necessary to tell them that outside, they can't have it.
We haven't had enough tracing, that's, um, that's going back to recess at this point, what we have seen though is. You know, we, the reason that we had lifted the face mask requirement for recess was because. We were hoping that students would be able to engage in some physical distancing while they were at recess. And the feedback we've gotten from some of the staff who are in charge of monitoring recesses is that it's, it's just not feasible. So, it's more of a protective measure to, uh, avoid a potential exposure, rather than a reaction to any of the situations we've dealt with this past week.
And that's, and that's right, instead of, was considerations of reducing the size of recess and adjust so that kids do have. Some time outside without a mask on an option, or was that not considered?
Uh, we did not, because at this point, you know, school schedules are, are such a, uh. Interlocking, um, set of conditions, that we didn't want to send principals back to the drawing board to try to redo their school schedule.
Okay, Member Seraphy Cox.
Um, I just wanted to say that I am comfortable voting on the policy tonight, I'm also very happy to hear. From the Superintendent that, um, all of these things are things he's, you know, planning to implement. Um, I did have a question for you, Superintendent, um, which is, um, do. Uh, uh, we heard that Jackson Street i- uh, is basically having lunch outside, do the other schools actually have? Enough tents to have, um, lunch outside, is there enough space?
I would say none of the schools have enough tents to have all lunches under the tent outside, Jackson Street is splitting. And, um, I know we have some Jackson Street teachers on, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Jackson Street is splitting with. Half of the kids under the tents and half of the kids eating, um, on, in other outside areas, and then they're sort of rotating time under the tent on a weekly basis. So that's, that's how they're doing it there.
Sure, uh, I guess my question is, do, do other schools feel like they have enough? Space to do what you're asking, I, I, you know, Bridge Street has. Not nearly as much space around it as Jackson Street, for instance.
That's correct, and it's, it's a much different situation when you're dealing with nine hundred students at a high school. Than when you're dealing with a few hundred at an elementary, so, I, I would say that the, not all schools have. This same capacity to do that in terms of space, and I also think that some schools may run into, uh, situations with coverage. And supervision, um, concerns with being able to do that, I, I haven't heard back from all principals on modifications to plans yet. So I can't answer that definitively, but I can say that, that's why I gave, my directive was to do what you can to maximize outdoor eating. Not a firm rule that all meals must be taken outside, because I don't think that, um, that will be feasible for all schools.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and I guess I'll just say that, um, I feel like this committee had talked about. Uh, lunches outside pretty early, so, um, you know. There, there, I know there are lots and lots of things to plan for, but this is something that the committee brought forward, um, quite a few months ago.
Thank you, uh, Member Kaufman.
Thank you, um, so Doctor Provost, I don't want to put you on the spot again, but it seems to me like I asked you whether you had discussed these specific items. That Member Voss proposes with the Health Advisory Committee, and you said you haven't had a chance to do that yet, so it. Unless I'm wrong, this seems contradictory for you to put out guidance if you haven't discussed it with them yet, I like them all, but it. I think we just said, we're gonna do something else, and this adds to my confusion, so could you correct? My confusion, or what I didn't hear correctly, or what have you?
So to clarify, I have not reviewed this language with the Health Advisory Committee. What I did when I asked Member Voss to go, to, to put the, the language back up on the screen was to go through it point by point. And see what items were or weren't discussed with the Health Advisory Committee, so, we had, we had already, I guess I could say. Our conversations anticipated many of these proposed policy changes, but we haven't actually seen them in black and white.
Right, well, Member Voss gave us an idea what she wanted to say, so you're saying you did have an opportunity to discuss with them, and they are in favor of these changes?
I don't think there's anything in here that, that is contradictory to, to what our discussion was, all I was saying was. We didn't have a chance to look at this actual proposed policy.
Right, but, I'm sorry, so just to clarify, you feel like this is complimentary to the advice that the Health Advisory Committee? Would give you if you had met and discussed it yesterday, or can meet tomorrow?
I, yes, I do.
Thank you. Thanks.
Member Voss. Uh, you're muted, Member Voss, you're, you're muted.
Thank you, um, I'm just gonna add to that, we've been emailing about this for quite a while, Member Kaufman, and so I appreciate that Doctor Provost brought it to that group. And I've tried to write it in a way that it's a little bit open, so to the best of our ability, so. When I reread this with you all, I do feel like it's not really locking us into anything, but it's pointing out what the current best practices are, and saying we're gonna try to meet them. As much as possible, so, um, unless there's more discussion, I don't really want to call the question on myself, but I will say I am definitely ready to vote. And, and before I do that, Doctor Provost, are you comfortable with us voting on this, or are there any concerns you have?
I'm not, I, I appreciate you adding the language to clarify that we would allow students to speak outside with their masks off. Um, I, I think it's fine.
So, Member Voss, would, uh, the, would you then make a motion?
I would, I would like to make a motion to amend our, um, face covering policy to be what I had on the screen. I'm happy to put it up if anyone wants to see it again, and I will email it to Doctor Provost and Annie as soon, if, if it passes, but either way, I'll email it to them.
Okay, all right, so there's been a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
I think you're muted, Annie.
Sorry about that, Member Gold. Mayor Narquitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
No, only out of principle, I'm not comfortable with voting on this, having just seen it for the first time a few minutes ago.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes, yes.
Member Goldman.
No.
And Member Voss.
Yes.
The vote is. Six in favor, two against, and one abstention.
Okay, so, uh, the policy is updated, um, thank you, um, Member Voss for all of your work on this. And, um, thank you, Doctor Provost, for, um, working to clarify it for us this evening, so now we'll, um, have. Uh, one final item before we jump back to, uh, item A, and that is, um. Item T, which is a vote to update the registrar job description, Doctor Provost.
Earlier this evening, you approved a trend, or accessing funds, uh, for the registrar who works in central office. To take on responsibilities for both, um, K through eight, pre-K through eight, as the individual currently does, as well as the high school. This job description is updated to reflect the high school duties, and also to clarify some other things that currently are part of the role. But aren't reflected in the current job description.
Okay, um, is there a motion then to, um, to go ahead and, um, update that registrar job description?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Narquitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman. Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
And member Gold.
Yes.
Vote is nine in favor.
Okay, so the motion carries and the uh the update to that uh registrar description um is approved. So now we'll move back in the agenda, back to item A and back to the superintendent's presentation and vote on the revised uh DIP metrics or District Improvement Plan metrics. Dr. Provost.
Okay, before I start, I see that member Gold has his hand up.
Member Gold.
Yes, one thing, yeah, do, um, Dr. Provost, is this presentation that we're seeing the same document from August twelfth?
It is.
Okay, so there's nothing different from that, that August twelfth document.
Correct. Okay, and knowing that we have a um, a rule saying that we can only meet for sixteen more minutes, I will share the screen and try to get through this as quickly as possible. Okay, um, so as I had started to say earlier when this item came up, the main changes with the first two items and the proposed metrics were to add a, a measure that was decreasing the number of uh or the percentage of individuals who uh disagreed with items, as well as increasing the um percentage of individuals who agreed with items that we would think are indicative of making progress towards the goals in the District Improvement Plan. Item number three is completely new. Um, I shouldn't say completely new, it's, it's substantially reworded. As this appeared the first time it was proposed, it was to increase participation in the Ed Trust survey. There was a goal now that wasn't quite explicit about trying to get a more representative sample. So that has been rewritten as to increase the percentage of caregivers who hold historically marginalized identities who complete the Ed Trust survey. The only, the only um dimension that was measured on that was race. And so what we can say is that eighty-three percent of the individuals who completed the survey last time I gentrified is white. And so the proposed goal is to increase to twenty-five percent of respondents hold a disclosed historically marginalized identity. I just added that as well because we do have a prefer not to say is one of the options. So those are the proposed changes to goal number one, based on feedback you provided me earlier in the summer. Goal number two, um, the main question was whether uh this, this first goal um was ambitious enough. And I have included this graphic, this graphic is really just for discussion purposes, but it will, it'll um be removed um from the final document. This is to show, one of the methodologies for goal setting is to try to find an exemplar to match up to. Now, the vocal surveys are private to the districts, they're not shared publicly, so we can't compare ourselves to a uh comparator district. However, what we can say is, you know, we can use our own results on this dimension as, as an exemplar. So um, we had this, this item that's in yellow here is where that item sits right now, it's seven points below the state mean. On this index, the best we did was one item, actually, yeah, one item that was nine points above the state mean. So you can see that that might be considered an exemplary response. So since we're hitting this hard in our District Improvement Plan, if we wanted to move this item, which is the number of, or the percentage of fifth graders who read books in class that include people who are similar to me to a plus nine to the state mean, that would mean that we'd be moving that to about fifty-four to, to sixty-one percent of fifth graders strongly agree with this item. So that's an increase in that um, in that proposed item from last time, that's the only change there. Goal three is completely rewritten. And I'd like to thank member Levy for um working with me on this, we worked through several drafts. And so this is all completely new. The first three items um are, I propose to address by signing the district up to participate, actually signing the district in grades five through twelve to participate in the Gallup Student National Poll. That was sort of prompted by a question member Levy asked earlier about, so you know, what would, what would it really look like if students met this goal? And um it struck me that, you know, they would be hopeful, engaged, and thriving. And the Gallup poll actually has measures that um can tap into or purport to tap into whether students are experiencing hope, engagement, and whether they're thriving in school. And so the goals are set on the first three metrics um as being uh above, substantially above the national averages. So, you know, accord on this measure, about fifty percent of students are hopeful, about fifty percent are engaged, and about two-thirds are thriving. And so the goal would be to increase that to sixty-six percent for hope and engagement, and seventy-five percent for thriving. Um, the next item is to increase the number of eighth grade students demonstrating mastery of all six stages of the civics projects. There is a new rubric that uh the district is prepared to implement, but has not really launched because of COVID. This is part of the change to the, the uh history, the history frameworks and the set, the inclusion of the civic standards in grade eight. And so um when you look at the way that, that their civics projects are to be measured, there are six stages, and our goal is to get a hundred percent of our eighth graders demonstrating all six stages of the civics competence as measured by um the rubric provided by the Department of that. Next is to increase the percentage of students evaluated as being provision, I'm sorry, NPS educators evaluated as being proficient or exemplary on standard two. That's because standard two is the standard that um taps into how well um educators are engaging students of all different identities. Currently, eighty-six point five percent of our educators are proficient or exemplary on standard two, and our goal would be to get it to at least ninety percent of educators proficient or exemplary on that standard. The next is to increase the number of required NHS courses with explicit content standards addressing identity of self and others. Right now, we have a wellness course that is a required course for all students that includes a uh unit on um identity and how to manage interactions with other people. And um so what our goal here is to uh add identity standards to at least two more um ELA and history courses that would be the types of courses that all students take as part of their, their um curriculum in the high school. The last is to increase the number of curriculum units reviewed using the seven forms of bias protocol. We, at the time I wrote this, we had curriculum leader, uh curriculum teacher leaders and department chairs trained in the protocol. Um, I can tell you, as of this point, we're much closer to a hundred percent of um the staff being trained because we used one of the training days at the beginning of the year to train educators across the board in uh using the seven forms of bias protocol. And so now it's just a process of going through the units and um examining them for bias. So those are the changes to goal three, completely new. Um, changes to goal four are um slightly, are, are, are much more modest. There was a uh request to change for four-year graduation to five-year graduation for our stand, you know, our metric. So I just rewrote that, so it would be appropriate to five-year um graduation rate goals rather than four-year graduation goals. And then a new one um to reduce the performance gaps between elementary schools um using the accountability percentile. Um, so in twenty nineteen, Bridge Street had an accountability percentile of twenty-seven. The median accountability percentile for the other three schools was sixty-three. The goal here would be to increase Bridge Street's accountability percentile to forty, which would um would close them. The only caveat I'll throw out with that is, you know, it's a little unclear how the accountability system will be implemented as uh the Department of Education rules forward. You know, they've said that last year's results will not be used for accountability purposes, so we may have some missing data on that. But those are the changes that I embedded based on your feedback from the last time this was proposed. And so um I would ask for your support for these revised metrics.
Thank you, Dr. Provost, um, uh, member Gold, you have your hand up.
Yes, um, like to make a motion. And but before making the motion, I would like to explain the, a part of it so that it makes sense. So updates to the metrics um for goal four were a priority for many members of our community and multiple members of the school committee. I think the inclusion of a metric for equity across the four elementary schools is an incredibly valuable and important update. And I know the BSS community will be encouraged to see that the disparity in academic performance of BSS as compared to the other schools has been identified, and that there's a commitment to write this in equity. As I shared in our July School Committee ma- School Committee meeting, and in my metrics comments that I shared with the superintendent and the DIP team, it is also important that JFK and NHS also have growth goals, and that all four elementary schools have growth goals. Currently, the metrics only have a goal for BSS. The other three elementary schools do not have academic growth goals within the DIP. Having metrics for academic growth goals for JFK, NHS, and the other three elementary schools is critical. And so my motion is to approve the revised DIP metrics with the caveat that A, growth metrics for the other three elementary schools will be added, and B, achievement uh 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 growth metrics for JFK and NHS will be added. And so that's my motion, uh, that's my motion.
Uh, okay, um, Doc, uh, is there a second on that motion? Dr. Provost.
No, it's okay, I'll wait to see if there's a second.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second, I think, I just need to take a moment to reread number four, but I think I second it.
Okay, so there's a second. Um, so you're basically saying you want to approve it, but you want it amended again?
Um, I want to approve it, but I want him, I want the, the Dr. Provost um and his DIP team to add um metrics for the other three elementary schools, growth metrics. Um, and in the name of equity, right, that we should have all the schools aiming to grow. And also uh JFK, we don't have a comparison in NHS. One of the things is, we're using BSS to compare us to the other three um elementary schools. But we should also be comparing um JFK and NHS to their, you know, our peer district middle schools or some other metric. And I'm, I'm comfortable with us not even having to see it again as long as, um, because we're not, I don't think we should be adjusting what the numbers are here, but just if there is a metric for it. And so that's why I was saying we need to have a metric that includes uh JFK and NHS.
Dr. Bro, or Dr., uh, member Levy, your hands up. Dr. Provost's hand was up, is down, member Levy.
Do you want to go first, Dr. Provost?
So I, I would just say that the state does set targets for each school, um, and that may be one way to easily do this. Um, the, I also customarily, when I present my MCAS data, do do the comparisons to our, our, our other schools. So tho- those are two ways that could happen, and how they have historically happened. Um, but I, if I'm, if I'm understanding it right, you're saying it, it doesn't necessarily even have to come back to the committee, it just has to be something that we do with.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I, I am uh trusted and confident that your team has developed um growth goals, right? Like, and, and we're able to identify reasonable goals to achieve. Uh, I just, rather than us having to look at it, if you want to present it to us, great, but I'm just saying, yeah, let's approve this and just please add in so that anyone can look at it and see, you know, someone could pick up the document and say, hey, is, what's the goal for my child when I'm in JFK or in NHS? That's all, that there should be documented.
Member Levy.
So member Gold, can you just clarify, are you suggesting a new metric? Like a new, a new category, a new metric, because I'm just trying to figure out how to fit that into the current metrics that are in there. Like it talks about reducing, reducing the performance gaps between elementary schools. So are you, I just want to better understand, are you suggesting a new metric?
Um, so yeah, so this, this um, let me just share, this last one was not there originally. So this bottom one in red, reduced performance gap between the elementary schools, that came about from our July discussion where we asked for metrics for the schools. And so um that's essentially, it would be a new row there, but along the same lines, just adding in for JFK and NHS what their um, what their growth goal would be. And to say have something for the other, they can include it in this one, reduce performance gap between the elementary schools, and see all schools increase their accountability percentile by blah, 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 whatever they can figure out, you know, is reasonable for the district and for the schools to do. So for it would, I guess it would be an additional one for Ja- additional row for JFK and NHS, but the other elementary schools can be included in that one um that's already there.
Okay, so there's been a motion, are, are you comfortable with your seconding of that motion, member Levy?
I still am unclear, member Gold, I'm sorry, it's late, it's eleven o'clock.
We just hit eleven, so we vote the motion to extend.
Motion to extend by five minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Um, clerk, call the roll, please.
Do we have executive session, do we have to extend longer than five?
No, do we?
You have executive session.
All right, I move to extend by fifteen minutes.
Okay, um, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busansky. I have a comment on that.
Oh, stop.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
To the motion to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, I don't know how important the executive session is for tonight, but if it's urgent, I would like to um go there right now. The, the motion is to move to executive session now so that we
Not urgent.
Fifteen minutes.
It's not urgent.
Okay, um, we also have a pending vote on, we're, we're right in the middle of a vote on a motion, so I think we could certainly take the vote on the motion. Um, but we do need to extend the meeting, so that's the most, that's the primary issue that has to happen. So um, the motion is made and seconded to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen, so I'll just ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Nope.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon. Oh, he's not here, sorry. Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
No.
Member Voss.
No.
Member Gold.
Yes.
And Mayor Narkowitz.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Okay, so um, so back to member Levy, are you comfortable with your second of this so that we can move to a vote?
I guess so, I'm still a little confused, but whatever, it's fine, it's late.
Okay, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the uh motion to approve the um, the superintendent's movementation plan.
Member Fallon.
But uh, just to clarify there, Mayor Narkowitz.
With all your, yes, ca- catches, yeah, I didn't mean to not include that.
I, I prefer caveat.
Okay, fine.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes, and I misspoke at the last vote, I meant, I meant yes, to extend.
I meant yes, to extend.
Oh, okay.
I'm so sorry.
It still passes.
Okay, I, I, sorry.
Member Voss.
No.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
And Member Busansky.
Yes.
The motion is uh, eight in favor, one in
Okay, so um, so then the question is that there is an executive session scheduled. Um, and the question would be uh, to uh, the Chair of the Negotiations Subs Committee indicates that there's nothing pressing, Dr. Provost? Is there any, are there pressing matters?
Uh, it would just to update the committee on things that and it would also give the committee an opportunity to approve some minutes. I know there was a, a desire to approve some minutes earlier, so could do that.
Um, so I guess the question would be, uh
Motion, can I make a motion to move to executive session?
You can make a motion.
Yep, motion to move to executive session under Mass General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with collective bargaining or litigation. If an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares specifically to address the strategy, respect an arbitration matter and prohibit practice charges pending at the Department of Labor Relations till eleven fifteen.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Hmm. Curious. Member Kaufman seconds the motion. Okay, so let us um, ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Member Seraphie Cox.
No.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
No.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
And Member Fallon.
No.
Vote is six in favor, three against.
Thank you, so the motion carries. So the school committee will now move into executive session. Um, because to hold this discussion in public would det- be detrimental to our bargaining position. So I would ask that all non-members of the school committee would, uh, we, we will also adjourn directly from school committees, so we will not return to executive, uh, to a open session, so I would ask all non-school committee members to please um, leave the meeting at this point. Um, so that we can do the executive session. Um, and we will just go through the participant list to see where we are there. So, a few people are moving out. Western Mass news. Waiting room. Okay, I think people uh, Liz, are you all set? I, uh, Liz is still here, but um Liz may be a co-host, so I can't actually put her in the waiting room? Is that possible?
Well, she's, I can, let's see.
Yeah, I'm not able to put her in the, I'm, I'm sure she just has it running and, you know.
I can put her in the waiting room.
Okay. Uh, okay, and then um, the North Hampton.